Do we have three board members?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'd like to turn the time over to Dr. Woods. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening and welcome. I understand we have some Battle of the Burgers recognitions to give out. Mr. Mike Marble.
Oh, it's red. Okay, here I am. I actually got to go to this event. It was really great. And what an amazing thing. I'm looking forward to going every year now. And we have some of our involved participants who are here to be recognized tonight. So I'm going to invite Mrs. Jenny Hutter and Mrs. Amy Ricken up to do our official recognitions. So let's welcome them.
Good evening, governing board and Dr. Woods and our executive cabinet. I'm the Supporting Director of Career Tech Education here in the district. And I couldn't be prouder of the awesome event that we hosted this year in partnership with Pachanga Resort and Casino and Visit Temecula Valley. But mostly, it was made possible because of our amazing Temecula Valley students and our staff. This event was an amazing success. Pause for clapping. Pause for clapping. Just a couple data points. We sold 440 tickets. And after we cleared all of our expenses, we raised more than $12,000 to support our CTE Culinary Arts Pathway at Temecula Valley. So this partnership with Visit Temecula Valley and Pachanga Resort and Casino is really important. And I want to make sure that we understand that they donate everything for us to be able to put this program on. And then our students and our faculty who work in that culinary arts pathway reap all of the financial benefits. And we know in times that we're currently living in, things are a little more expensive at the grocery store. And so by working with these two partners who are incredibly generous, it allows our students more opportunities in terms of curriculum and content throughout the season as they're working with their amazing culinary teaching staff, Chef Malaysia Berquist and Chef Ivan Flowers. I would also like to acknowledge our amazing district CTE team. Our coordinator Stephanie Medina. Jenny Hutter, who is the heart and soul of our CTE department. She supports our industry partners and our work-based learning opportunities. If there's a person in Temecula that doesn't know Jenny, I don't know who they are. But she constantly is bringing in industry partners to work with our students and provide pre-apprenticeships, job shadowing, internships. Amazing opportunities that help them prepare for life after high school, whether that's college or career ready. And thank you for all that we do as a district to support the governing board, helping us support our executive cabinet, helping us support our CTE pathways at all of our middle schools and high schools. So it's been an amazing event to celebrate. And tonight, we're going to announce the winners of our Loaded Fry teams, which were incredibly competitive this year because Pachanga narrowed the focus a little bit on how many students we could take behind the scenes and work in the kitchen. So I would say that this is the most competitive group of fry winners we've ever had. So I'm going to start with our judges' choice. First place, the fry title Taste of Asia Fries. And our winners are Adrian Torres and Andia Shirvani. So come on up. Shake Principal Leone's hand and get your certificate. All right. Next is our people's choice. First place and the judges' choice for second place, fry title Mexican Street Corny Asada Fries. Winners Sophia Gooden, Patty Rico, and Megan Taugh. You had to attend the Battle of the Burgers to get your samples, Mr. RC. Next year. All right. Our next group of winners, people's choice second place and judges' choice for third place, Smoked Corny Asada Fries. Winners Dana Rodriguez Salinas and Jaden Colgan. Congratulations. And our final group of winners, people's choice third place, the Tex Mex Barbecue Pulled Pork Fries. Winners Tyler Shura, Brianna Cornejo, Miles Ortiz, and Ash Chappell. All right. Congratulations to all of our winners. Let's give them one more big round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the regular open session meeting of the Temecula Valley Unified School Board of Education on November 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. In attendance this evening are Dr. Melinda Anderson, Mr. Emil Barham, Dr. Joseph Komrosky, Mr. Stephen Schwartz, Mrs. Jennifer Weirzma, and Mrs., I'm sorry, Ms. Melissa Chai, student board member. We also have secretary to the board, Dr. Gary Woods, and executive team. We will now have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands.
At approximately 9:30, the governing board will determine which of the remaining agenda items can be considered and acted upon before 10:00 PM, and may continue all other items on which additional time is required until a future meeting. All meetings are scheduled to end at 10:00 PM. Items considered in closed session for action in open session. So, is Mr. Schwartz here for the? We'll give Mr. Schwartz just one minute before we do. And then I'll make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, closed session, item E1A. I call for a motion in a second to approve the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel regarding the following student expulsion matter. Number 362223, suspended expulsion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Laney?
Schwartz.
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Komrosky?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes. The motion is adopted unanimously. I have one quick statement to read. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We value your participation and look forward to hearing from our community. To ensure an orderly and respectful meeting, I'd like for us all to review the following guidelines. Please treat all speakers, board members, staff, and attendees with courtesy. Public comments will take place during the designated comment period. Each speaker will have their allotted time to share remarks. Comments should relate to matters within the board's jurisdiction, and we ask that you stay on topic. Disruptions such as shouting, interruptions, or aggressive behavior are not permitted, and they interfere with everyone's ability to be heard. Our board designee, Brian Pastor, has been authorized to act on behalf of the board in enforcing rules of decorum. Mr. Pastor is empowered to determine if and when individuals may be asked to leave. Please be reminded that it is the board's duty to maintain safe and respectful environment so that all voices can be heard fairly. Thank you for your cooperation and joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, everyone. I'm about five months into my term as the district's first student board member, and this role has taught me more than I ever expected. Not just about policy or governance, but about people. I get to sit on this dais and see the big picture of our district, and then the very next morning, I'm back in the student parking lot, grabbing my backpack and walking through the hallways at Chaparral like any other senior. That contrast between being here and being there has given me a very real understanding of how change feels in our community. Students feel it, staff feel it, families feel it, and I feel it too. Every morning when the bell rings, I'm reminded that graduation is coming closer whether I'm ready for it or not. We're all stepping into a future with new faces, new responsibilities, new expectations. Some days that excites me, other days it scares me. And I know a lot of students feel the same way, because change, even the positive kind, asks us to let go of something familiar. But I've learned that while we cannot control change, we can control how we meet it. Across our district, on every campus, things evolve constantly. Programs shift, people transition, traditions adapt. And when something changes that we didn't expect, it's natural to feel uncertain or emotional. Sometimes it's tempting to hold on to what we know to stay grounded in what feels safe. But the truth is, we rarely ever get to see the whole story when change happens. What we do see, what we do experience, is how we support each other through it. And that support is what makes this district strong. I've watched my classmates lift each other up during stressful weeks. I've seen teachers adapt to challenges with resilience and compassion. I've seen how parents show up again and again because they want the best for their children. And I've seen administrators make difficult decisions with the future in mind even when the present feels uncertain. All of that reminds me that change is not something that happens to us, it's something that we move through together. So tonight, I want to encourage all of us, students, families, educators, community members, to approach change with openness instead of fear, to look for growth instead of loss, to seek understanding instead of assumptions. There's always a silver lining, even if it takes time to find. And there's always something to learn even when we least expect it. And there is always an opportunity to move forward. It's not going to be perfect, it's not going to be without difficulty, but we'll move forward stronger, wiser, and more connected than ever before. As we continue into the rest of the school year, I hope we all choose the path that leads to growth. I hope we welcome new chapters with grace, and above all, I hope we remember that the way we face change says a lot more about who we are than the change itself. Thank you.
We now have a readout of action taken in closed session. Action taken in closed session must be reported to the public once closed session ends. Today's closed session began at 3:00 PM. The Board of Education took the following action in closed session. Mr. Barham?
Thank you. It was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Schwartz to approve the separation agreement and release between the Temecula Valley Unified School District and Dr. Gary W. Woods, effective January 1st, 2026. The motion to approve was adopted with a vote of five to zero. It was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Schwartz to approve the settlement agreements for classified employee number 341685, effective November 10th, 2025. The motion to approve was adopted unanimously with a vote of five to zero. It was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Komrosky to approve the confidential settlement agreement between Temecula Valley Unified School District and Kronos, a UKG company. The motion to approve was adopted unanimously with a vote of five to zero. It was moved by Member Schwartz and seconded by Member Komrosky to approve the settlement agreement for LB. The motion to approve was four with one abstention, for adopting one abstention. It was moved by Member Anderson and seconded by Member Schwartz to approve the compromise and release agreement. This motion was approved and adopted unanimously with a vote of five to zero. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Melissa Chai will introduce our student organizations.
All right. As your student board member, I have the honor of introducing tonight's student spotlight. Each month, we have the opportunity to highlight our amazing students from our schools who remind me why we do what we do. And just a friendly reminder, our spotlight speeches are limited to three minutes. From Chaparral, we have Braylon Walker and Madeline Fox.
Yesterday, our ASB class had the privilege to attend the CADA Leadership Conference. They spent the day learning from student leaders and came back inspired with new ideas to bring to Chaparral.
We have had our Fall's Giving Donation Drive happening since last September. Students and staff donated non-perishable food items to support local families in need this holiday season.
November 12th, our students packed the donated goods as care packages for Operation Christmas Child. It's been heartwarming to see our campus come together in the spirit of giving.
Our intramural dodgeball tournament has finally concluded. Congratulations to the baseball team on the win.
We also celebrated Senior Night for our football team during our home game against Roosevelt. Friday, the 14th, we faced Chaminade in round one of CIF and won in a high-scoring game, 63 to 42.
Unfortunately, our football team lost the round two of CIF in a close game against Louzinger High School.
Three of our clubs, Club America, Student Venture, and Turning Point, put together an amazing Veterans Day thank you event during lunch. Their letters were taken to a Veterans Affairs office for distribution.
We just celebrated Red Ribbon Week with themed dress-up days, lunchtime activities, and a strong message of living drug-free. Each student received a drug-free wristband and a pin for participating in Red Ribbon Week.
We also hosted our middle school outreach program, welcoming leadership students from James L. Day, Bella Vista, and Summit Academy. They played games and activities that involved sharing ideas and leadership development.
We just celebrated Midnight Madness last Thursday. Students packed the gym for a night of basketball, games, performances, and school spirit as we kick off the winter sports season.
Thank you again for your time and for your continued support of our programs, students, and campus culture.
Please enjoy this video we put together for you.
And from Great Oak, we have Abby Huth and Cadence Lane.
Good evening, board. It's nice to see you guys again. Here's November at Great Oak. This last month has been full of hard work and celebrations. Back in October, we competed at MV for flag football unified games. All of our athletes showed so much heart. Seven of our student athletes signed last week on National Athletic Signing Day. On Monday last week, a few of our WSB students went and visited the Nixon Library for our prom venue. They said it was gorgeous and we are looking forward to prom. We celebrated Red Ribbon Week with a meme day, PJ day, and red day. We really love seeing all the silly memes. We also hosted a Bring Your Own Bowl where students brought a bowl from home and they got ice cream for free. Our boys, our boys in football have ended their season, but they made it to round two of CIF. In cross-country, our girls won league and are looking forward to racing at CIF finals on Saturday. Peer leaders went to our elementary schools and continued with the first lesson, teaching students never to give up and encouraging students to believe on themselves. They also hosted Red Ribbon Week where students pledged to stay drug-free and celebrated with a Bring Your Own Bowl Ice Cream Day. Mental Illness Awareness Week featured informational boards that highlighted different mental illnesses and worked to destigmatize them. Also, we handed out fun fidget toys. Hindu Heritage Festival was hosted with our Hindu Yeva Club. Filipino-American History Fest was hosted with our Filipino Culture Club. And this month, we have our Native American Culture Fest with our Indigenous Club. And that's it. Thank you, guys.
And from TV, we have Megan Hammond and Kenzie McMcGinn.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. There have been so many fun events and plenty more to come. We're so excited to share what TVHS has. I'm Megan.
And I'm Kenzie. Our boys water polo team has been fantastic and made it all the way to CIF championship game. It was the first time in school history that our team went to the final game. It was a heartbreaker, losing by only one point, but they've got another chance in the state playoffs. They're currently playing right now across the street against Granada Hills. If they win, they'll be back at home on Thursday.
We'd also like to give a shout-out to our girls volleyball who made a Division One quarterfinals. Boys cross-country did great at league finals. Ryan Lopez and Jackson Price were named All-League First Team, and Grant Thimmer and Jordan Marlborough and Logan Cool placed All-League Second Team. The boys' team competed in CIF finals this last weekend. As the fall season sports wrap up, winter season rolls in.
Tomorrow evening, we have the annual marvelous show with over 20 special education students from Chaparral, Great Oak, and TVHS. It's been a pleasure having all three schools work together. The group dance is amazing.
Last week, we distributed our academic pins. Those that received a 3.0 GPA or higher on the nine-week progress report or improved their GPA by .5 since the last progress checked received an academic pin for their achievements. We handed out 1,900 3.0-plus pins and 430 improvement pins. Students get to bring their pin slips to our fall drive-in movie to receive a free treat. We have concessions and a few trailers. It's a real drive-in movie experience.
Our 7V7 flag football intermural began last week and continues this week. We have 11 teams with our best matchup between the football team and the basketball team. It's a great competition. Lots of students come out to watch during lunch. Dramas production of You Can't Take It With You finished last week. It was an amazing production. Our stage tech crew went above and beyond. The set was great and the show had some really funny situations.
TVHS is excited to be a part of the Electric Light Parade on December 5th. ASB, Golden Valley Regiment, Cheer, Dance, and Ballet Florico are all representing TV and can't wait to show our very merry spirit.
Congrats to our Science Olympia, the winners of the GPA championship. They had the highest average GPA of any group on our campus this fall.
Our Dancing with the Bears Disney night was last Wednesday, and so much fun. Next up for dance is Valley Fusion in December.
On Halloween, the seniors hosted Chunk or Treat for all the 9th through 11th graders. The class of 2026 went all out this year with some amazing decorations. It's a generous thing for our seniors to spend money on candy. It's not cheap. We even had a car hand out Chick-fil-A nuggets instead of nougat. They went fast.
Thank you, and we'll see you next month. Go Bears!
Thank you, TV. And from Rancho Vista, we have Gina Emmanense and Sofia Engulo.
It's been a while since you've heard from us. Our last update was back in September, so we're excited to share what Rancho Vista has been up to during the month of October. To start, our entire campus took part in a daily ghost hunt. Each day, little 3D-printed ghosts were hidden around the site, and students had fun searching for them as part of our Halloween activities. We also hosted a fun tattoo staff fundraiser where students purchased temporary tattoos for staff to wear. On Friday before lunch, our staff showed off their tattoos in a mini fashion show at lunch. It was definitely a highlight. Another big event was our flag football team color challenge. We had great participation with themed days like Monster Monday, Twin Tuesday, Wicked Hat Wednesday, Throwback Thursday, and Costume Day, Scare Away Drugs Friday.
During Spirit Week, we also hosted a blood drive on October 28th where both students and staff donated to livestream. The very next day, on October 29th, we celebrated our Fall Festival. For Fall Festival, we were on an activity schedule during the school day with booths like Soda Ring Toss, Mummy Wrap, and Pumpkin Bowling. Later that evening, the fun continued as we opened the festival to families. Students brought their siblings and parents for games, prizes, and fall treats. We also held a Pink Up Pop-Up Spirit Day to support Cancer Awareness Month, which was meaningful to both staff and students. In honor of our Hispanic Heritage Month, our Latino Unidos Club sold yellow flower grams as a celebration of Mexican culture and friendship. And finally, to close off the month, we hosted a pumpkin painting event during lunch and a fun, creative way to end October. We also had a Career Day where all students were able to learn and figure out what they want to do in the future. We also celebrated Kindness Day. Students wrote uplifting notes to each other and even themselves. The whole school felt more positive, and it was a great reminder that a little kindness goes a long way. And lastly, we hosted our super fun pie eating competition. Students and staff went head-to-head to see who could finish their pie the fastest. The crowd was loud and the energy was high. It was definitely one of the most entertaining events of the year so far. That's all for now.
Thank you, all students. Now it's time to recognize the important school organizations that supports our students and staff every day. So first, from our Teachers Association, we have President Edgar Diaz.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. Right before we go on break, a very much-needed rest from our classified and certificate staff. They're all waiting, can't wait to get there. I'm sure students are doing as well. Today, I wanted to mostly speak to you about December 2nd. December 2nd is the 50th anniversary of Individuals and Disabilities Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. Before IDEA was passed in 1975, only one in five children with disabilities was educated. More than 1.75 million children with disabilities were excluded from public schools. Children with disabilities were often institutionalized, where they received little to no education. Parents who kept their children with disabilities at home had no support and few options for education. States were legally allowed to deny access to students with disabilities because they couldn't accommodate them. IDEA required schools to provide equal access to education for all students with disabilities and provided federal assistance to make necessary accommodations. In fifty years, the promise of IDEA evolved to provide inclusion of students for a free and appropriate public education, accountability, and equitable access to instruction, and parent and student involvement for individuals birthed to, I think it's twenty-six years, depending on where they're at. And all that was enforced by the Department of Education. While the education side has delivered, thanks to the advocacy of educators and their unions across the country, fifty years later, and we continue to wait for the federal government to fulfill its promise. IDEA promised federal funds to pay for forty percent of the excess cost to identify, assess, and support students with disabilities. Forty percent. TVSD has appropriated $6.5 million currently, with an estimated appropriation of about $20 million, which is what it should be. That is a gap of thirteen and a half million dollars. That is way less than forty percent. The difference comes from the general budget that we receive from California. IDEA is run from the Department of Education and protects students' rights to an education. The Special Education Department is now decimated, though. The talk that is shifted to different federal departments, but what will they know on how to educate a student with diverse learning needs? To TVSD, the underfunding contributes to increasing safety concerns in our classrooms with, I think, one in four students, we're closing in on twenty percent, or one in five students, we're closing on twenty percent of students that have an IAP. And so that means that there's a shortage of funds coming into the district and also a shortage of support staff and burgeoning caseloads for teachers. This impacts service minutes and compliance with IAPs. Special education classrooms are forgotten when rolling out new programs, and teachers are expected to deliver the same instruction to a diverse group of learners. Many times, technology is outdated or incapable of the new platforms for assessment. Our special education teachers and staff are asking for the support they need to help students be successful. With appropriate staffing, there's less safety and compliance concerns. Join us on December 2nd, wear a blue shirt and a gold ribbon, and remember to keep all cuts away from classrooms.
Thank you. And from our PTA, we have Stephanie McCooly.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight some of our individual PTA's accomplishments so far this school year. These are just a snapshot of the many programs our PTA and PTSAs host at twenty-five of our schools in TVUSD. LaVornia Elementary is celebrating twenty years as a PTA. They had a successful back-to-school bash where students got to meet their teachers and create their very own Leo the Lion. They currently have 100% teacher membership, which is a reflection of the heart's commitment and belief in a school community that their teachers have. Paloma Elementary has seen more support and parent involvement than ever before. Their membership coordinator, Sherry, has been hard at work involving students and parents. Every single class has earned a prize through their participation in the membership drive. They have also been able to fund new murals on their two ball walls. They are now extremely bright and colorful, adding spirit and fun to their school. Vale Ranch Middle had an amazing walk-and-roll-to-school event, attended by Bike Temecula Valley, Caught With Your Helmet On, and Mayor Calphus. Each student who arrived at school wearing a helmet was given a gift certificate to a local restaurant. As the school with the largest number of e-bikes, the PTSA at Vale Ranch is committed to promoting safe riding in the community. Vintage His Elementary had a successful fun run where they were able to exceed their fundraising goal, allowing for additional low-to-no-cost events for their school community. They also have 100% teacher membership, a reflection of their teachers' continued dedication. Temecula Luisenyo hosted a family kindness night where they participated with their social-emotional team to create several activities that encouraged conversations and overall kindness. They are also collaborating with Great Oak High School's EAI team to host a Holidays Around the World event. Vale Elementary hosted their annual Harvest Festival where Temecula Valley High Schools, JROTC, Dance Team, and Marching Band all performed and engaged with students. Many schools hosted Chunk or Treats in October, giving families the opportunity to engage with their school community in a relaxed and fun environment. TVC PTA is hosting their annual National Reflections Art Program Award Ceremony in December. This night allows us to celebrate all of the students who have advanced in the program, student success, and strength in school communities. Decades of research shows that when families are engaged, students have better outcomes in all areas, from grades and attendance to social and emotional well-being. On behalf of the PTA and PTSAs in TVUSD, thank you for your continued support. We look forward to seeing you and other families at our next events.
Thank you all for the work you do to keep our school strong. And at this time, do we have any student comments?
All right. And then briefly, I just stated that action taken in closed session is read out in open session. If there's no action taken, then we don't have anything to read out. But I did want to clarify that the board considered the changes made to the Chaparral High School basketball team in closed session, and no action was taken. We have one public comment for consent.
Upne? So I'm commenting on the warrant list. There is an amount of $67,000 for AALR. We've had two twenty-nine working days from December 15th, and that is about $292 per day. That means you've been spending an hour with the lawyer every day, pretty much, from the day you guys were sworn in, with no benefit for the students. When I say don't get involved in unnecessary culture wars, this is what I mean. $67,000, nothing to show for it. $300 per day could buy a lot of things for elementary schools, equipment for kids. There is a lot. $67,000 down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. And then I pulled the warrant list as well, because I wanted to address that. I went through the warrant list, and I feel like this is not even a very aggressive... I went through the bills and I signed them off. And I want to point out that $36,410 has been spent on cure and corrects and complaints against board members, mostly Brown and Brown Act complaints. That we cured and corrected one event, and the rest of them were found not to be in violation of the Brown Act. And we've had several complaints against board members. So as board president, I am not an attorney. And one thing I do is I forward, in fact, I have to forward, the complaints, the Brown Act complaints, to the attorneys for review. If someone makes a complaint about several meetings, I think we had one that was like eight different complaints in one letter, then the attorneys have to sit down and go back and watch those meetings, and that's hours of attorney time. So my plea to the public is to reduce the number of Brown Act complaints, because we have had to cure and correct one time. The rest of them were not found to need correction. I noticed that some people chat GPT their complaints. I recognize them when I see them, because I too use ChatGPT. And ChatGPT will give you what you ask for. If you ask for a letter validating your complaint, then ChatGPT will give that to you. And then when I send it to the attorneys, we find out that it's actually not in violation of the Brown Act. So I'm going to ask the public to help reduce these fees as well. I also want people to know that we use this law firm for several different things. So it's not just... It's not just phone calls. Because the $67,000, that was separated from the superintendent. Okay, okay. This is privileged information, but any board member that wants to look at the invoices can look at the invoices for their own clarification. But that's what I found, is a majority of this is complaints and cures and corrects. Hours and hours and hours. And just to clarify a question that someone had regarding our attorney policy. If the attorney is going to present in closed session, then I usually don't send an update or a brief summary of the conversation. I will ask, are you going to discuss this in closed session? And I think it's better that the attorney discuss it rather than me send a two-sentence... I can start sending, the attorney will discuss it in closed session if people want that. So that's it.
I have some comments, but go ahead, Mrs. Wears.
I was just going to say I have one item to pull on the consent calendar, and that would be number three.
Can Mrs. Wears, I want to stick with the legal, though, if it's okay. Okay. So I actually looked at the invoices myself. And first of all, I found the invoices, with all due respect, Mr. DeMarco, I found the invoices very vague. It was hard to keep track, it was hard to track exactly what was happening in terms of Dr. Anderson's interactions with your law firm. I saw things on there like "boardmanship matters." You know.
Mr. Barham, you have to be really careful, because it's a privileged document.
I am, I am. Well, there's nothing privileged there, because I'm making the statement that it's very vague. But I do want to point out that $62,000 in September and October were related to the Board of Education, not to anything else. And we need to be better, in my opinion, we need to be better stewards of the taxpayer money, because I see two-hour phone calls. I've never had a conversation with an attorney for two hours. So I question what is being talked about for two hours, and I see multiple conversations like this. I see things like conference office regarding board issues. I don't know what that is. And I think what needs to happen is, I think what needs to happen... Linnae, can you please put up the policy? I... Please. And this is to help us be better stewards of the taxpayer money, which I don't feel we have been in this particular area. So I would like to point this out, so that whoever is in the seat of president, whether it be you, if you continue, Dr. Kamroski, or whoever it's going to be, can you please highlight that item that we talked about? Yes. Because I would like everybody to see this. Can you highlight it, please? Is it there? Okay, I can't see it. There it is. Does it say the board president may act, may not act alone when conferring with legal counsel? When we made this policy and passed it in January, this was a safeguard to protect the taxpayer money. And I remember you, Dr. Anderson, saying, "I feel the pinch." Okay, so I'm asked, you know, when I call an attorney. So I'm calling upon you, if you remain in the seat, or for anybody else, to feel the pinch of calling an attorney. And I've also talked with Dr. Velez, because I feel like she has a responsibility, since she's part of this board policy. She's part of the internal control here. That if she says no, we have to respect that as well, okay? Because we have talked about this on this dais, that it is not typical for a board president to be conferring with attorneys. It is typical for the superintendent to be conferring with the board attorney. So all I'm saying is, let's try to do better. Mr. DeMarco, if we could get some specific, you know, better... I mean, I'm addressing you. I don't know if I'm able to. But I would like to see some, you know, I've reviewed like our general legal counsel invoices. Mr. Huff? They're good invoices. Thank you.
May I have one more minute? Is that okay with the board? Can I just take one more minute? I agree with you, Mr. Barham. When there's complaints, like I'm going to file an FBI blackmail complaint against the school board president and send it to the FBI, that takes time out of... I'm not going to address that. I send that to the attorneys and I say, "Here's another complaint for you." In fact, you can look at my emails. They literally say, "Here's another one. Here you go again. Here's another one." And then they research them and they come to closed session and address them. So I think as board members, we can all work better. We should be careful about what we also put on the agenda regarding attorney, because that wasn't as expensive to... That's all I have to say. Is there... Mrs. Wears, did you want...
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
Not with this topic. I just have number three that I'm pulling.
So I would like to just say one more thing. That if you or anybody else who is sitting in the seat can comply with the last part where it says... Because what the last part says is, if you're going to call an attorney, write out who you're going to call and why, because it keeps the board informed as to what's going on in terms of the legal issues that we're dealing with. And you're the only person, unless we get permission, that is talking to the attorney. So if you could, it'd be great if you could follow that part of the policy so that we're kept informed in the future.
And I'll do better. I've been trying to do better with that. Sometimes the attorneys report in closed session. So I ask, are you going to report in closed session? And I assume, I've actually mutually said, like, I'm not going to send an email. I'll let you report, because it's more detailed, and I feel like I'm not...
Okay, no problem.
It would be through the grapevine, so I might muddle it.
I just want us to do better. I just want us to do better here. That's all.
I agree with you. I'll do better. Okay. We're going to pull item number three for Mrs. Weirzner.
So this, I'm not going to go into detail with, but basically I'm not prepared to ratify a coaching situation. We can't talk about personnel issues, so I'm not going to. But that is why I pulled it and my vote will reflect that.
I echo, I echo exactly what you just said, Mrs. Weirzner.
Okay. Was there any other items pulled from consent? So I'm, let's see. I move to approve consent items one through thirty-two with removing number three. Do I have a second? Oh, wait, did you want to pull one? Oh, did you want to remove it and, and vote on it separate? They want to vote on it separate. Oh, it's okay. It's okay. Not a big deal.
I'll second that.
We're going to just remove number three so we can vote on it separate. You have a second?
I seconded your motion.
Okay. Lenee?
Yes.
Weirzner?
No.
No, no, this is to vote in items outside of number three, one and two, and then all the rest.
Okay, let me correct myself. That's yes, everything but three. Thank you. Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is adopted unanimously. I move to approve, did you have any other comments on personnel item? Okay, I move to approve personnel item listing eleven eighteen twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lenee?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzner?
No.
Kamroski?
No.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote?
I'll pass on this one.
Okay, the motion passes three to two. No more consent items. Right, we will go to action items. So action item number one, did we, did we switch these around or is the December board meeting still? Lenee, we switched stuff around, so keep me, keep me on track. Do we have public comment on December? Okay, Mrs. Weirzner, I'll turn this over to you.
My situation here is pretty simple. We are looking at P one, the December board meeting date and certification. My work calendar had not been put together when we decided on a Friday evening for a board meeting. And what I'm respectfully asking is that we figure out a new day and time. I would also like to add that if we're going to do the organizational aspect, which we have to do, I'd like to request that it's a little later in the day versus a one or two o'clock so that people have the ability to speak into that. I think it's really important. So I do apologize. On the twelfth, I'm running a huge event and there's no way that I can be here, but I want to be able to be at a December meeting. So I don't know what we can discuss. I'm pretty flexible on other dates, so I'm hoping we can come to a consensus on that.
Mr. Schwartz, can I ask, when do you leave to go out of town? On the eighth? Can we look at maybe the fourth or fifth? I hate to kill a Friday night. Fourth?
The fourth is a Thursday, which would be better than a Friday during the month of December. There's just too much.
Would you be able to do Thursday night?
I could do a Thursday.
Is there anyone opposed to rescheduling the meeting on Thursday, the fourth?
I have to skip my trail life, mountain lion leading, but that's fine. I'm good.
It would be, still with the workday, if we can bump it a little bit later.
Five, five o'clock? Oh, yeah, we, yeah. Four o'clock?
So I have, I have a question. So are we going to do the special meeting that we talked about in closed session on that day? Right?
We could like come in at three or whatever earlier.
Yeah, because Dr. Velez is saying yes.
That would be my preference to do that. We can just start with that. I think that would be the best thing to do.
Can I ask, do we need a special meeting or can we start closed an hour early?
I.
Yeah, let's just start closed. We don't need a special meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
We're going to start closed at four then, or three.
Three.
Three, that gives us an hour.
That works.
Okay.
And if we need more time, I'm up for three, I mean, two thirty-two, I mean, whatever.
I think that'd be better to change it than have Mr. Schwartz here for the.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That is our only board meeting in December, right? That is the big, okay.
I think we have consensus. Do we, I don't think we need to make a motion.
Before you vote, there's one other challenge. We have to have the December first interim budget report. December fourth. Is it a possibility to tack that on to this meeting?
So that's a really, really tight timeline to try to get budget done because of the holiday. And everything would have to be posted by Monday and available to the public by Monday, which is less than two weeks from right now. And so there's a possi, I'm going to see how much we can get done by the end of the week this week. But there's a possibility that we might need to have a special board meeting on that Thursday night just for the budget. That would buy us two more days to post the budget for public viewing, so.
Let me ask counsel, so Tony, the idea is we would have the reorg meeting on the fourth. We would also post a special meeting for the fourth following this meeting. Which means we could.
Just make it a regular meeting.
Well, the problem is the posting though. See, that's where our concern is. We don't want the seventy-two hour. So we can do a twenty-four hour posting? You think we can do that, double them up?
Okay. Okay, so the meeting is all on the fourth. But to buy Mrs. Lash more time, we're going to just post two separate things. We're going to post a special meeting and a regular board meeting, but it doesn't change anything for us.
Correct. Yep.
That's what she's requesting. Yeah, okay, good. So we have, we have board consensus to do that and I don't think we need to make a motion. Oh, we need a motion to cert, certify it. Okay. I move to certify the new meeting date of December fourth at three.
I'll second it. Oh, sorry.
To be held at the TV USD thirty-one fifty Rancho Vista Road.
Second.
Seconded, does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. All right. Do we have any comments on the TV USD, TVE memo? Okay. Mr. Diaz?
My apologies, I thought we were further up on the agenda. MOU, right? Okay. So the time invested into developing site-wide programs to address student needs is valuable and necessary. Our elementary and middle school teacher leaders appreciate the recognition by the district with the stipends provided by this MOU. It provides the time for them and the acknowledgement that they're, invest a lot of time into making sure that their students have, their students and their school sites receive a lot of input from the practitioners that are in the classroom working with them. While this is a temporary MOU that runs until the end of the year, we want to make sure we don't forget our TK teachers. This group of teachers got really big this year. We had one site, one, one, one would be at a site. Now that we have three, four, sometimes they outnumber the kindergarten teachers. So we want to make sure that we're able to add a stipend for our TK teachers moving forward so that they can also be recognized in these processes and these meetings as well. Thank you. And if I can take a moment, thank you for the conversions you did earlier for, for our temporary teachers moving to probationary contracts. I just want to come up another time to acknowledge that, but thank you so much.
Thank you. So I move to approve the elementary and middle school instructional leadership team, ILT, and professional learning community, PLC, lead stipends memorandum of understanding ten twenty-one twenty twenty-five between Temecula Valley Unified School District and Temecula Valley Educators Association. Do I have a second?
You got it.
Got it. Okay, seconded by Dr. Kamroski. Does anyone oppose? Is there any discussion? And no one opposes, no one opposes, so the motion is adopted unanimously. Do we have any public comment on number three? Nope. Then I move to authorize resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six slash fourteen for district staff to utilize the design, build, delivery project method under Ed Code section one seven two five zero point one oh for certain school facility projects district-wide.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Is there any public comment on number four? I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six slash sixteen authorizing the district to utilize the best value procurement method pursuant to public contract code two zero one nine point eight for applicable construction and modernization projects exceeding one million dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose? There's no discussion? Then the motion passes unanimously. Do we have any public comment on number five? All right. I move to approve the new certificated administrative job description, Assistant Director of Compliance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And I don't know who the point person would be to answer these. I, I know there's been some change with compliance and so forth, and I understand this assistant director position. But then as we look at what it won't handle, I'm wondering if someone could remind me what's going to be done as far as the PRAs and requests that come in. Did we say we're having techs handle that or I just wanted a reminder on what that looks like now?
Great question, Ms. Weirzner. So the reason we are proposing and recommending that this position go to an assistant director position, this position is actually currently Director of Compliance. And as you'll likely recall, was held by Mr. Michael Marble, who is now our Marketing Innovation Communications Officer. So that's kind of the public relations area. In the past, public records were actually assigned to that position. So we are going back to that format. And as such, because it's impacting then this job description, we recommend this one go to Assistant Director of Compliance. And Mr. Marble's office will continue to work on public records. And that involves things like email communications, district records, potential text communication for school district business and things of that nature. But I'd be happy to continue to work alongside Mr. Marble as we have in the past as it relates to those specific duties. But given that change, we recommend that this position go to Assistant Director.
Are there any other questions? All right. Does anyone oppose the motion? Then the motion passes unanimously. All right. Okay, we have two public comments on item number six.
First up is Caroline Hoffman, followed by Sarah Bell.
I want to address the CSBA Delegate Assembly nomination, which is a two-year statewide commitment, April twenty-six to March twenty-eight. This role is supposed to represent the district, not serve as someone's campaign proper political stepping stone. So let's talk about who's actually appropriate here and who very obviously isn't. Jen and Joe have given us a masterclass in how to prioritize personal politics over district needs. There's a way to, if there's a way to turn routine governance decision into political billboard, they'll find a way. And now that it's election season, I anticipate they will suddenly care about statewide representation. They want something flashy to slap on a mailer. The CSBA delegate seat is not campaign trophy, but let's face it, they will treat it as that. Emil, I'll give credit where it's due, has genuinely tried to support the district, but was appointed to fill a vacancy and his future is uncertain. CSBA's timeline makes that a real issue. We can nominate him now and then have to watch the district scramble if he's not even seated when the term begins. That's not planning, that's rolling the dice and hoping for the best. And once you apply the extremely basic logic of can this person actually serve the full term, we're left with two possibilities, Melinda and Steve. Melinda, I'm sure she's trying, I really am. But her tenure as board president has not been exactly a showcase of strong leadership, steady communication, or even basic follow-through. If we're handing out awards for chaos management, maybe. But adding more responsibility when the current responsibility already seems overwhelming, that's not fair to her, the district, or to CSBA. Which again, leaves Steve. The one person who's not juggling reelection drama, not trying to use the position as campaign glitter and has actually demonstrated competence without turning every task into a spectacle. So if the goal is stable, capable, election year free, drama-free representation, the choice should be obvious. Nominate someone who can serve the full tune, do the job, and not turn CSBA delegate seat into their personal political stage. Good governance isn't complicated, but some people really try their hardest to make it that way.
Next, Sarah Bell?
I wasn't aware of the, yeah, Sarah Bell. I wasn't aware of the previous speaker and what she was going to say and it echoes mine quite a bit. I just want to thank the board for being thoughtful and mindful. And I hope that this is also the case when selecting a nominee for the Delegate Assembly because this role represents our entire region at the state level, as you know. And so it's important that the delegate reflects our commitment to collaboration, not individual, you know, goals and desires. That the person can be professional and keep the focus on our students. There are board members that have proven and are more than happy to say that they're unwilling to serve in the best interests of all students and families. I don't think that's someone that you should consider nominating to represent us. You know that the representative is a voice for our community and it affects statewide decision-making, which therefore affects TV USD. So I hope that you will choose someone who can represent us with integrity, cooperation, and a genuine ability to work constructively with all types of people and families. Thank you.
And that's it? So before we start discussion, let me make the motion and get a second and then we can start discussion. And can I, well, before I ask a clarifying question. I move that the governing board, if it so desires, nominate candidates for the twenty twenty-six dash twenty-eight CSBA Delegate Assembly. Nominee to submit the completed biographical sketch electronically to the superintendent's office by Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so up for discussion?
Can I ask a clarifying question before we discuss?
Yes, who are you asking?
I, I'd like to ask Mr. Schwartz because he's been a delegate. Can you please remind myself and the public, once a candidate is nominated, how the voting, how the person actually becomes a delegate? I have forgotten.
I can. Our region, CSBA region is eighteen A, which includes, goes from Temecula, which is the bottom of Riverside County, up to Riverside, out to the desert. I believe we have somewhere around twenty delegates, give or take. The Delegate Assembly is held twice a year, usually right before CSBA. So this year, CSBA begins on December third. The Delegate Assembly will begin on, usually on December first. So it's usually two days before. There's a general meeting. There are, and at that general meeting, you vote for different people, different officers. In CSBA, we also meet, we also met when I was a delegate as a group and talked about regional issues, things that affected us. For example, some districts could not deal with the electric bus mandate because their district is so illy that by the time the electric bus went up to the top of the hill to pick up kids, it ran out of power. And so we had to advocate for those districts to make sure that their needs were included in what went on.
Can I, can I ask another question? So is there, is there a prescribed number of delegates that are going to be assigned? that are going to be assigned to a region?
I believe there are a number of vacancies. You're elected for two years. So anyone who was elected in '25, serves '25 and '26, and is, if they want to be reelected, is up for reelection in January. Those who were elected in the even years are, yeah, in the even years have another year to go. They were elected in '25, they served '25, and they will serve '26. So there are X number of open slots, and they are filled by the nominees. Usually, there are more nominees than slots.
So just because you're nominated doesn't necessarily mean you're secured a spot?
No, absolutely not. When I was nominated last year, I was not reelected. When Mr. Komarowski was nominated, he also was not elected. People were elected, the X number of spots were filled by whoever got the most number of votes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And just to clarify, each district, when the, when the slate comes out, votes for the delegates. So in January, we will get a slate of all the people who are up for election. And it will say there are, say there are 15 candidates, 11 or 10 or nine will be elected. I don't know what the exact number is at this point. Okay? Okay.
Sure.
Can I ask anyone to raise their hand if they don't want to be a delegate? All right. Can I propose that we nominate the two board members that we did? Can I make a motion to do that? That we did last year? Or do you want me to make it individually? Individually, okay. I'm going to make two motions then, because I'm going to nominate two board members. I'll start with Dr. Komarowski. You'd be okay if I nominated you. I motion to nominate Dr. Komarowski to be a delegate. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Laney?
Do we get to discuss?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to discuss? I'm sorry, please, please discuss. I'm going to, I want people to know I'm going to nominate Dr. Komarowski and Mr. Schwartz to be delegates.
And just to be clear too, I'm going to, I'm going to motion for Steve as well, so.
Okay. Ms., Mr. Barham, did you have any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to discuss.
Okay.
So I thought a lot about this. And I'm going to support your nomination because I do feel that even when you put it in ChatGPT, it says that CSBA could stand a little bit of conservative influence. And I think we all know that. So within the spirit of let's work together, I'm going to support your nomination. That's all.
I do have one additional comment. I would like to point out the irony of the fact that none of us at this point are going to CSBA. And if you're looking at nominating a board member as a delegate, that's aligned with the thought process that you go as a board member and you take part. So I just want to point that out because it doesn't make sense. I would like to see Dr. Komarowski in that position with the three years of experience you've had. You will be a great voice. And you should be at CSBA as well. Anybody who wants to attend should be. So that may be a moot point, but that will be a discussion if they get nominated. It's too bad that they missed that opportunity in December.
The election is not till January, so if you're nominated, you wouldn't, whoever wins or is elected would not attend this one. It would be the spring one in San Diego would be the next one.
I understand that. I'm just looking at the alignment that would make sense. If we're doing CSBA, we're doing CSBA, so.
Okay. So there was a motion and a second. Laney?
Schwartz?
Yes, in the spirit of working together, as Emil said, although Mr. Komarowski and I may not agree on much except soccer and the San Diego Football Club. I, oh, thank you.
Playoffs.
I do respect his, his right to have his own opinions and beliefs, and I agree with Emil. We could use with a little bit more, I'm going to not say diversity, a little more difference of opinion at CSBA. So I would vote yes for Dr. Komarowski.
Wiersma? Yes. Komarowski?
Yes, and I echo what Mr. Schwartz said. In fact, me and him talked about it before even this meeting started after closed session. And I agree with Mr. Barham and I agree with Mrs. Wiersma.
Oh, sorry.
And there you go.
Barham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote.
Yes.
So the motion is adopted unanimously. And then you, do you want me to make the next motion? Or did you want to?
I'll motion for Mr. Schwartz to be a CSBA delegate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Go Schwartz.
Schwartz?
Yes, thank you.
Wiersma? No. Komarowski?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote.
Yes.
Barham, yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Emil.
So the motion is adopted four to one. All right. All right, the next one is revised board law, board bylaw parliamentary procedures. And this was just a recommendation by Mr. Diedrich to update this language. Can you pull it up? We have it in our governing workbook, but not in the policy. And he just recommended to add this line to the policy. Do I have, I move to approve the revised board law, 9323.7. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second and a comment.
Okay, and then Mr. Schwartz?
I took the liberty of doing some research about parliamentary procedure, which I would like to share with my fellow board members. There were some things I never knew. For example, I didn't know there was a difference between information items and report items. So I did take the time to print it out to give to everybody. And I think the next time we do our agenda, we should have information items separate from report items because they are a little bit different. So if you could pass these down to the president and to Mrs. Wiersma.
Can you give these to Laney so she can make them available to the public?
Yeah, I'll give it to Joe and Emil.
Just make sure these are posted.
I'll give her my set, because I have them on, I have them on recorded. Did you get both? The front page and the back? Did you get them all? No, no, there's, there's two, two pages that are separate. This one.
I got this one.
That one. You get the back one, Emil?
I got, yeah, stick to the most.
No, no, this one. Information and reports? I have it on my computer.
So then we'll have him email those to Laney's, the public.
Yeah, I'll send them to you.
Okay. Is there any additional comment? Mr. Barham?
Okay, so I have a confession I would like to make.
Uh-oh. Do we have a proof of that?
That sitting up, that sitting up here for the last year, I have not felt entirely secure. And the reason for that is because I passed off the knowledge and understanding of Robert's Rules to someone who said that they knew them. And quite frankly, at the time, my head just wasn't there and my body wasn't there because I was ill. And I just couldn't wrap my head around something as dry as Robert's Rules of Order. I didn't want any part of it. But last meeting, I thought to myself, I need to feel secure in this position, which means that I need to know and understand these rules. So for the last four and a half weeks, my nose has been planted in this book. And I don't want to point any fingers at anybody at this time, but we have been doing a lot wrong, in my opinion, as I read this. And this is not only from a lack of going into the book and doing the work to understand the rules. My own behavior has been impacted by the fact that I don't know what's going on here. And I talked to Dr. Anderson about this and took some responsibility for the fact that when I open my mouth and interrupt, it's wrong because I'm supposed to be recognized and she's supposed to recognize me. So there's a lot going on here that I am hoping that either Dr. Anderson, if she stays in the seat, or the next president understands what's going on here so that our meetings are more functional. So that's, that's all.
Mrs. Wiersma? So I have a comment as well. I do remember before you were sworn in last year, we actually did sit and talk about the fact that it might be helpful to have a workshop or go over some of these parliamentarian rules. Just so you know, a board doesn't have to adopt this. They can make that decision. So it's important to delineate that. If we are going to do it, then we do need to embrace it with knowledge. So I agree. I also want to point out to this board that months ago, I suggested a parliamentarian for much less than, no offense, Tony, than an attorney, because the point is we all had things to learn and we probably would have saved a lot of money in terms of the Brown Act. Is it, what is it? Is it a First Amendment violation? What is it? And that was my hope long ago in, in bringing that forward. So here we are today. And hopefully, moving into 2026, we can get better with all of that. I think that we, we can do some study ourselves. Maybe it can be a workshop item. But the other thing that I don't love is the fact that we micromanage our minutes. I see Brendan Koffus here from City Council. I'm going to give you a shout out because actually, the Temecula City Council's been phenomenal in how they've dealt with one another and had conversations without, I'm in a minute, can I have another 30 seconds? I didn't get my two minutes. It's just, like, it's been so embarrassing. And I think we need to look at that too because we should be able to have some conversation without that kind of bickering back and forth. And I would hope that we could grow into that. Yes, follow some standards and rules, but not micromanage one another to the fact of the public shutting us, shutting us down as they should at some point. So I apologize to the listeners. It's been difficult. So I think we, I am hopeful when we have a new president in January, whoever that is, that we can do away with some of this and also split public comments so we don't make people wait until 10 o'clock. There are things we can all do to get better, and I'm hopeful we'll do it.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments?
I would like to go again because I know I've been hard on you tonight, okay, before closed session with regard to following the rules because I knew that you put this up. But I do want to commend you on this fact, is that you added rules of debate into the process, okay, at the beginning, which I feel is, was very important in terms of how this board functioned. And Mrs. Wiersma, I agree with you in terms of we're sometimes a stickler for the debate rules. And we can't have a conversation, but there are motions that you can make for a more informal conversation. And we can, we can approve those things. So that's part of Robert's Rules. I mean, we can make motions for more informal conversation if we all agree to it, or if the majority agrees. So just, I agree with you. It's hard to like sometimes, even though the rules of debate, I think, have served us well in many cases, we need to have some informal conversations sometime. So let's motion for those. I agree with you.
Can I make a comment? Mr. Barham, do you know how to temporarily suspend the rules of debate? Have you got to that chapter? Good.
Now I do.
Okay. And I do want to point out that before closed session, I stated you needed a second when you appeal. And in Section 24, you need a second when you appeal.
I disagree. It depends on the appeal, Dr. Anderson.
That's not true.
It depends on the appeal. So we can, we can argue about that later.
Well, it depends on if you're the one appealing it or not.
It depends on the appeal, whether it's, if it's decorum, excuse me. If it's decorum, we do not.
You're interrupting me, Mr. Barham. This was my time and you interrupted me and it was my two minutes. And so again, if a member, Section 24, the ruling may be appealed immediately after it is made before any debate or other business intervenes. The appeal must be made by the member raising saying, I appeal from the decision. If another member seconds the appeal, the chair states the question. Shall, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? That's very formal. I usually don't do that. After debate, the assembly votes. A majority or tie vote sustains the decision of the chair. So it does need to be sectioned, seconded, that's Section 24 appeal. And lastly, the reason that I did, I asked for rules of debate is I remember, and I've been heavily criticized for having a meeting that went into 1:30 in the morning when board members were giving comments that were 14 minutes long and 17 minutes long. And I'm like, we can't always sit here till 1:30 in the morning so someone can talk till 17 minutes on a topic. But the board is really the power. The consensus of the board is the power of the board. So if the consensus wants to suspend the rules of debate, then you make a motion and you suspend the rules of debate temporarily. That's.
Can I respond?
No, because Dr. Komarowski didn't have a term.
Okay, no problem.
And you've responded twice. So, Dr. Komarowski?
A pastor that I used to be under for many years ago, he's not with us anymore. He would say that the blessed are the flexible for they shall not break. These are guideline, Chuck Smith, these are guidelines. They're not legally binding. Any board can say, well, I want to follow Robert's Rules of Orders. But they're, they're good, though, in case things go sideways. Case in point, in the last year, I know that many times, and I didn't raise my hand going, oh, 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 Robert's Rules of Order, Board of Order. When somebody calls to question, that shuts down conversation. You have to have a second. Then you have to vote. Then you have to make a motion and vote. Call to question doesn't mean we're going to vote. It's a two-part deal. Did I have to call that every single time? No. Why? Because I was trying to be flexible. So the fact that we're even getting into it up here shows me that the board dynamic still has these growth pains. And the more, I don't know, the more we start trusting each other, giving each other the benefit of the doubt, the less we rely on those. So I'm, I'm for them, but I'm for the spirit of the law, not the letter of the law. Every single meeting, it's just getting old, guys. That's just my point. That's just my point. You can be a master of Robert's rules of order and have no wisdom at all when you're during, you know, when you're a trustee up here. You have to have a winsome character while following these rules. So that's just my two cents.
Is there any other discussion? Everyone had two terms.
No, I want to get the over/under.
Mr. Barham had two terms.
Over/under?
Did you want to?
Nine thirty.
Did you want to speak again, Mr. Schwartz?
No, we're just betting on the closing time of the meeting. Be over/under.
Linay, will you call roll?
Schwartz? Schwartz?
Yes.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
Yes.
With flexibility.
Yes.
Student vote?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We have revised board bylaw 92, 9124, attorney. Was this, who was, was this submitted by Mr. Barham?
I'm sorry.
What's, who submitted this one?
No, next is five.
Oh, did we switch it?
No.
On number eight. Rebyla, bylaw?
I'm on number eight.
It's Mr. Barham, this is the attorney one, board bylaw 91 according to 24.
Yeah.
It's submitted by myself and you and Mr. Barham.
Okay.
Linay, you have to change as I mean, I'm sorry.
To four, to 9124?
No, never mind. Never mind, go ahead.
Who wants to start?
Where are we?
Can you pull it up?
I'm sorry.
Action.
Okay. The bylaw.
Let me make a motion and discuss. Discuss. Do you, does someone want to make the motion, Mr. Barham?
Is there public comments on this?
Is there any public comments? Nope. Did you want to make the motion?
Oh, I can make it. Yes, I move we adopt revised board bylaw 9124, attorney.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Um, sorry, Mr. Barham, go ahead.
Okay. So I was very appreciative of the attorney update from Advocates for Faith and Freedom because I've been asking for something from them for weeks. And it was very detailed and very complete to where I found that, okay, now I know what's going on with this case. There are other summaries that I get that are one sentence that don't help me at all. So in providing a summary of what was discussed, I don't know who would be doing that. I'm, I'm going to assume Dr. Velez that maybe you're going to take up that role because you're going to be involved with Dr. Anderson in collaborating with the attorneys. So is that safe to assume?
It is, Mr. Barham.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, all I'm asking for is if, it's, it's, it's simple if the, if we're talking, I mean, I'm, I'm part of the client and I would just like to know what's going on so that I, you know, on the front end, like I talked about with why are we talking to an attorney and then what was the result of that conversation? And I think that's, that's a fair request and it's in accordance with the amendment to this bylaw, which I think is a good one. So that's all.
I just need a minute, but I need to ask a question because it's regarding something that has been discussed in closed session regarding attorney contact. No, closed session. Okay. So it's just a question they have that we'll address in closed session because you brought up the update with Advocates of Faith and Freedom, so that's a closed session question. Um, no, I just had a, I just had a question about certain circumstance with this, if it's pertinent.
With revising the bylaw, one thing that I would like to be sure of is if we're discussing something where we're receiving counsel's advice that's written, that it's not piecemealed or parceled out without context. I feel like at times recently, there's been a paragraph, but there's me wanting to know what the rest of it said. And I think that's really important so that we are all on the same page and it makes me feel more solid in thinking I'm getting all the facts. So if we can just decide to do things that way, that will give me more stability in reading it and going, okay, I can trust that this is it and it, there wasn't, it wasn't just a, a chosen paragraph for a specific reason, if that makes sense.
Is there any language that you would like to amend at this time?
Uh, I don't know exactly the best way to word that. I hadn't thought that through. It just kind of came to me because I know I'm going to talk about it on another item. So anything that we can simply say, if, if advice and counsel is rendered that there's full and complete information there.
Can I make a suggestion?
Wait, just one second. So this is, this is under action because again, I was told like I have to put things where you want them, but this is not a first read and it has not been attorney reviewed.
Okay.
Can we, I, I want you to look at it and know if you want any amendments, Mr. Barham. I think I put my name on it with you. I think it looks pretty good. But let's, can we count this as a first read? Can I ask the board what your thoughts are on that?
I'm, I'm, I'll consider what anybody else.
And that gives you time to review it?
Yeah. I think it's pretty thorough though. I mean, I see it as thorough, but.
I, I would like it attorney reviewed.
For what reason?
Uh, so we don't get in trouble and have to.
I mean, all we're asking for is a summary.
Is a summary?
That's all we're asking for of what the conversation was. I mean, I don't find that to be, like, how can we get in trouble for that?
Actually, I think it'll be good because I have a question I want to ask the board in closed session. So are you guys okay if we just wait a few weeks? It's only a couple of weeks away.
I'm all right.
Yeah, it's fine.
Make it ring a bell.
But I, can I, can I make a suggestion to Mrs. Weirzma? Mrs. Weirzma, if you would like to, because I think Dr. Velez is going to take the lead on providing these summaries that you provide her direction and with the consensus of the board, she gives you that context.
You guys are gonna, can I make a comment? I believe that the board should have the, we're here for over, district oversight. So I think, my opinion is the board, the attorney should be writing the summary to the board and not to the superintendent. That's my thoughts, but we can bring it back next time and discuss it. It's just like, how are we going to approach this?
I mean, the thing is for me, it goes back to what is typical for a board. And what is typical for a board is that the superintendent be conducting the legal business of the board so that she is able to write the summaries to the entire board. But we're, it doesn't seem like we're in agreeance on that aspect of, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you to comment, Dr. Dr. Velez.
I'd just like a point of clarification on this because this is meant, and you, if you read the language on here, it's litigation. So it is litigation that the board is involved with and it is soliciting updates from attorney firms in a written format that is sent to me and then sent to the entire board. So part of this conversation and what you're seeing on this board bylaw came out of conversations about wanting to be updated on litigation. It's not necessarily the small things that we may reach out to doctor, or to, I'm doctor, Mr. DiMarco on. It's the larger litigation pieces so that all board members are informed of what's happening with litigation. I'm not creating that. That is created by the attorney sent through, sent through me. And, and the reason that I had it sent through me to ensure that all five board members received it evenly.
I agree with what you said, Dr. Anderson, about oversight to the board. I agree with that. I also agree with Dr. Velez as far as sometimes you want the superintendent to coordinate that information so that there's no spokes on a wheel with the Brown Act. But I, yeah, but I firmly believe the governing board is the oversight to the district.
Yeah, I was thinking just direct from the attorney to the board, but we can do it however we want. I'm not like totally.
I think that's good. I mean, so yeah, let's think about it.
Let's think about it and bring it back and, and it looks like we want more discussion. So we do have consensus to bring this back.
So Dr. Anderson, just in regards to what Ms. Weirzma said and, and some of the feedback that she might have, what I would ask is that you each, if you have feedback on this, send it to me individually and then we can look at incorporating that into the board, into the board bylaw.
Yeah, and I think that'll make the next meeting efficient when we do that. I, I like that idea. Thank you. Okay. Um, so that one will be on the next agenda for a second read. We now have information and reports. Do we have any public comment on item number one, demands to cure incorrect? Okay.
Upney?
So I read the letter with this and unfortunately I had to contact an attorney for the September 30th meeting with, where I was under a very similar circumstance where there was a discussion for board feasibility study going on and suddenly one board member started pointing at me and yelling at me at the audience. And the lawyer did give me some advice, but I decided not to pursue it any further. I think it's better to find out like, what are you asking for? Like you said, like, you know, ChatGPT is going to tell you what it is. Like, is it a Brown Act violation? All of you have gone under the workshop what a Brown Act violation is. Like, what is the spirit of the Brown Act? Basically, it was like for public transparency, whenever you do board business, you do it in front of the public. You don't do backhand deals, you don't do backroom deals. That was the whole idea why Brown Act came into existence because there were backroom deals happening in San Francisco. And it basically, as you can see, I, I, I don't think blaming the public that you're filing Brown Act complaints is because we are getting legal bills. Don't do things that like, you know, lead to Brown Act complaints. It's pretty simple. That's the advice, Dr. Um, sorry, Mr. DiMarco is going to give you too. You all had a workshop in January where it was told to you like what you can and get on to for Brown Act or notifications. Again, you've mentioned like, you know, your job is oversight. If you stick to the oversight, only it'll be better. Like, I don't want this committee member there. I want to file a brief, I want to do that. All of this, you conduct a meeting, you get a bunch of things out of that meeting and it has absolutely nothing to do with the board business. So you can cut down all of these Brown Act violations and your legal bills if you start sticking to the board's business, which is education of the students. Thank you.
Item number two?
Upney?
Coming to this item again, this talks about a summary judgment hearing from Judge Roger Benitez, a judge who is a judge in the Southern District. We are in the Central District, so I was curious like why this is there. Usually cases are put in with the plaintiff's name, whatever it is, like, you know, for example, it's, if I filed a lawsuit, it would be like, you know, Daliwal versus Kamroski, why the judge's name is over there? The case that he decided he was supposed to give summary judgment on was the Mirable Billy Olson case, which has nothing to do with our district. We just mentioned in the brief once that there was a lawsuit may versus Kamroski and they're trying to come up with a class action lawsuit. This might go on forever because I'm not going to comment on the merits of like, you know, whether the classes are defined. The classes are like the employees of the school district, the parents of the school districts, they can do their reasoning. I've read through the whole thing, but I don't see the point of getting Mr. DiMarco sitting over here. Most of the lawsuits, whatever the judge decides, let's say he says some things like completely illegal, completely unconstitutional, CDE will get that information, they will send it back to our school district. Why do we have to insert ourselves into anything and everything that has to do with notifications? The problem with the school district is not we're trying to keep secrets from the parents what that lawsuit is about or where certain teachers object to certain trainings or keeping. The problem is the parents over here are, have full knowledge of their transgender children, but some board members refuse to respect that and they're targeting those students, they endangered those students, which is completely different. I don't think we need to insert ourselves or discuss every motion. There are 300 documents filed in this particular case. Are we going to have like a discussion and have a lawyer sitting over here for every motion that is filed at the case? I think this is again adding up to that 67,000. We absolutely have nothing to do with this case. We should not be discussing it over here. Thank you.
All right. So I actually asked Mr. DiMarco to give us a summary and I know he's, he's probably preparing a written because he didn't make any, he didn't say anything today. I, I've received a lot of emails and a lot of assumptions are being made with action that we can take. I don't understand this completely and I would like attorney's feedback on how does this affect our board and where is this going?
Are you, Dr. Anderson, are you going to make a, we have, is there a motion here?
No, because it's just an information item. And Dr. Kamroski, did you have anything to add?
I might comment after Tony, but I'm in agreement with what you just said, but we're just starting this. Yeah.
Did you have a question, Mr. Schwartz, or do you want to wait until?
I, I have a question. But isn't there a recommended motion on this?
No.
I'm pretty sure.
What, the motion to discuss?
There's a motion to receive information regarding the summary judgment hearing from Judge Roger Benitez. Are you going to make a motion to receive the information?
Let me see where that was put.
It's, it's.
I motion to receive information. Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone oppose receiving information? Two?
I do.
Okay.
I have no idea what this is about other than what I looked up online. So apparently it's a case about notice, parents being notified about their children's, something about their children. I don't know what it has anything to do with us. It's a case in court. Are we now going to start talking about every case that's in court? I mean, we'd be here forever. And when I looked it up, I was like, what is this for? Why are we talking about this? And then I looked it up today, there was no summary judgment today. So the motion to receive information regarding the summary judgment is moot because there was no summary judgment. So as far as I'm concerned, this is a moot point and let's move on.
Okay, so the motion to receive information was three to two and Mr. DiMarco is here, so.
Okay. Can I make a point of order, Dr. Anderson, please? It's.
It was one, do you want to call a formal vote?
Yeah.
We had a motion and a second. Linay, please, we're gonna.
Can I, can I make a point of order? Because I don't want us to, I don't want to have another Brown Act violation. Okay, that's why I'm making the point of order.
What's your point of order?
Okay, the point of order is, is that the description that was provided with regard to the public being informed about this item did not, in my opinion, provide enough detail for meaningful engagement. If the agenda item states no or little detail, this might be considered too vague for meaningful public engagement beforehand. To meet Brown Act standards, the agenda should describe the item sufficiently to inform the public of what is under consideration or information being shared. Without such clarity, the public may not be fully informed or able to participate effectively prior to the meeting. In my attorney's opinion, my personal attorney, receiving this summary judgment, which didn't occur, falls short in complying with the Brown Act's spirit of openness and public engagement. While not requiring exhaustive detail, the agenda should convey enough about the item's nature and potential impact because there would be potential impact if there was a some summary judgment, especially if it involves consequential or controversial actions. So my point in making this point of order is not to shut down discussions because I think that this summary judgment, when it's made, is going to have broad implications for our district. Not right now, but we want to prevent Brown Act violations. And there are members of the community who have threatened Brown Act violations because they do not feel that this was agendized properly. So that's all I'm saying. You're an attorney, go ahead and give your opinion.
You called a point of order?
Yeah.
Your point is not well taken.
Okay.
So let me take, there was a motion and a second. Linay, please call roll.
Schwartz?
No.
Weirzma?
Yes.
Kamroski?
Yes.
Barham?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Student vote? I'll pass on this one.
So again, this is because there's a lot of questions about it and I want to know, like, how does this affect us if it does?
Point of order, Dr. Anderson. It's very, very clearly stated. The motion is to receive information regarding the summary judgment. I'm waiting to hear the information regarding the summary judgment from our attorney. Thank you.
I have one comment to interject here before we go to you, Mr. DiMarco. May I, may I be recognized, Dr. Anderson? Thank you. So the one thing I would like to say is there is that final judgment. There's also summary judgment hearing information to go through and have good questions to ask. I've actually done a lot of research in this. I think you're spot on in the fact that it can be applicable to our district. I have a couple of points to recommend as to how it's pertinent. So it is important to recognize that these words right here can be translated as we can talk about some of the discussions that have gone on thus far, even though there's not a final determination. And I think Mr. DiMarco will provide that.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make another point of order. I am, and I have the right to do it.
What's your point of order?
My point of order is the following. If the agenda states that the item is to receive information regarding the summary judgment, discussion could and will be considered a Brown Act violation. If this discussion was not properly noticed on the agenda, then the public has not had proper advanced notice and opportunity to participate, which violates the Brown Act's openness and transparency requirements. If unexpected discussion takes place, I can guarantee you there is going to be a Brown Act violation filed. So I would like to recommend this motion. I would like to prevent that. Motion to receive and not discuss information regarding the summary judge, the summary judgment that did not take place hearing from Roger Benitez. Do I have a second?
One moment, you had a point of order. Just a sec, Mr. Barham, you had a point of order.
Okay.
Your point is not well taken.
Okay.
Everyone pause.
All right.
Are we violating the Brown Act right now? No, okay. And if people want to file complaints, you need to know you're not punishing me, you're not punishing Mr. Schwartz, who's had Brown Act, Mr. Barham's had Brown Act, Joseph's, or. Joseph's, or Dr. Kamroski, Mrs. Weersma, we've all had Brown Acts. You're punishing the students when you type in ChatDPT that you want to file a Brown Act complaint. So just, that's off the topic, but Emile, you're just threatening them.
I'm not threatening anybody.
So there was a motion and a second to receive it, information, and I want to take a vote, so we can discuss. Are you okay with that? Motion and a second. Linay, please call real. We did, oh, so it's three. So you would like to start with the comment, Dr. Kamroski, or would you like?
Thank God, this lawyer, Tony DeMarco specializes in the Brown Act. In fact, he gives workshops on it, so I think he's very well apt to handle that kind of questioning from Mr. Barham. Thank you.
I won't be asking him anything.
He's the expert.
And listen, it's going to be a brief update, because even though there was a motion for summary judgment, we don't have the judge's ruling on the summary judgment motion as yet. I would like to clarify, though, there were some questions about how it could possibly be affecting your school district, your students, even though it's not filed against us. So we're not parties to this, and we were only mentioned once, perhaps in the pleadings. One of the really unique things about Judge Benitez's ruling so far is that he certified a class action. And the class is very, very broad, to affect all parents in California and their students. So it's certainly a case worth monitoring if these are issues that you as trustees believe are relevant to your constituents. That said, I think the anticipated agenda item would have benefited from an actual ruling on the summary judgment. So what the plaintiffs are asking for is either an actual ruling by Judge Benitez that the case can be completely resolved in part on certain issues only. And if he doesn't rule on the summary judgment, they have an alternative request to make an injunction, a statewide injunction. And it really has to do with the F.AQ been passed regarding sex segregated facilities programs, et cetera. And the interesting nuance that has come up in the last week is that CDE and the state Attorney General Rabanta had represented to the court that the F.A.Q. had been removed. And then apparently, it still exists in a certain fashion within a training that is now required by state law and is frequently offered to certificated employees through a PRISM program. It's, the training is endorsed by the state, and what we have to look for now is whether the judge is going to sanction any of the attorneys involved. Having been in a similar situation, I, I believe the attorney's probably acted in good faith in representing to the court that the F.A.Q. had been removed, but apparently it's still available. So this is something that I do encourage all school districts to continue monitoring. As a matter of fact, in addition to doing my Brown Act workshop at California School Boards Association meeting in December, I will be on a legal issues panel talking about this case and other parent notification, student privacy issues. But not much of an update, sorry, I have to keep it brief. But I think as part of your receiving information, if you have questions that you either have for me now or questions that you would like me to answer the next time I come back to talk about this perhaps, I'm willing to have that conversation.
Mrs. Weersma, did you have questions?
A couple of questions, yes. So just to clarify, the judge is considering sanctions, as you mentioned, against the California Department of Education for possibly misleading the court, right? And so I think the concern and where we're at in this district is because over the last couple of years, we've talked about parental rights. Are there secrets? This is something that the judge is highlighting, and if we're looking at every district having to do a training like PRISM, it's important, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there were whistleblowers who actually came forward and exposed some of that training that was going on and said, hey, this is a problem, ended up taking it to the court, and obviously, it's been highlighted. Some would say they've been caught red-handed. I'm sure we could be more careful and say, we're not quite sure yet. But obviously, this judge sees something here, and that's why I think it is important to ask these questions, because this has been important to us as a district with parental rights. What's going on? What are our students being told? We don't want secrets between students and families. So I think that's why this is a case to watch, and hopefully, there will be. I guess my question would be, do you have an idea on the trajectory of when there will be finalized thought that is shared?
It's, it's not uncommon, uncommon for a judge, especially on a dispositive motion, that's going to get rid of at least a part of the case, to take a couple of weeks to issue a thorough written decision.
I just have a quick question. Assuming the judge decides whatever he decides, the state could then appeal the decision?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad we agendized it and had that wonderful conversation.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so did we, are these the ones we switch around? Mr. Schwartz, which one did you want next? So we're gonna, Mr. Schwartz asked that we do the California, oh, you know what? I'm going to take a five-minute recess right now. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm also going to dismiss Mr. DeMarco, so thank you for coming.
So, the board's vision sets the direction for all of our instructional work in our district. And over the past three years, we've aligned every central system we have to that vision. Our strategic plans, our instructional leadership teams, and professional learning structures, professional learning and resource decisions all point in the same direction, which is why we're seeing consistent movement across all student groups. The gains you'll see in English Language Arts and in math and in science reflect a unified system working toward board commitment to high levels of learning for each student. And this is kind of what I just talked about. So, we have the board vision, we're working through strategic plans, and the professional development that's actually really embedded in our LCAP plan. And again, we utilize our instructional leadership teams and our professional learning communities collaboration to help move the instructional practices which have a positive impact on student learning. This slide means a lot in terms of our educational support services team. These are really what we stand for. These six gears are the structures that turn the board's vision into daily practice in our schools. Through a guaranteed viable curriculum, data-informed decisions, collaboration, these anchors work together every day in the classroom guiding how teachers respond to student needs and ensuring consistency across grade levels in schools. They form the foundation behind the progress that you're going to see in literacy, math, and science. And this is actually where I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. Lisa's going to do a deep dive into English Language Arts and math and science. We're going to start from a very general CASP dataset, and then we're going to kind of break it down into student populations. So, Lisa, it's all yours.
So, first, we wanted to highlight some of our strengths as a district. So, you can see in the graph there on the right-hand side that TVUSD continues to outperform the state and the county. Nearly 64% of our students met or exceeded standards, which is nearly a 2% increase from last year. When you look at our dashboard and the average student within TVUSD, the average student grew by 5.3 standard points, and we maintained a high performance level overall. 11 of our 14 student groups increased their distance from standard, and one of our student groups maintained their distance from standard, which is strong growth in literacy achievement across the district. This really reflects our high-valued instruction, assessment, and professional development, which is all aligned. So, when we take a little bit deeper look into our CASP scores, there are four composite areas that make up the CASP assessment. They're reading, writing, listening, and research and inquiry. And so, when we look at the three bands, the first band is the above-standard band. So, these are students that demonstrate a strong mastery of that specific domain. Their skills are solid and consistent, they have a higher level of understanding, and they might be ready for like a challenge or an enrichment area. You can see that the vast majority of our students in each of the composite areas lie in that near-standard. And it's important to note that you can get a passing score, a 3 or a 4, on the CASP overall, and have a couple of your domains be in that near-standard. Because what that means is you might have mastered certain standards within the grade level band, and then you might not have mastered others. And so, there's a bit of inconsistency, but with great first instruction and some targeted differentiated support in the classroom, you can meet grade-level expectations. The smallest band down there is below-standard. So, these are students that might have significant skills gaps, they're not quite ready for meeting those grade-level expectations, and they might need some additional targeted intervention and support. So, I wanted to give you a sample question of what our students come across during the CASP assessment in ELA. So, this is a sample question from grade 6, kind of right smack in the middle of the grade. Read these 12 paragraphs and then answer a series of questions. And I'm just going to be super candid. Some of our students are going to use their entire cognitive load to just read this passage. If I had taken this test when I was a 6th grader, I was a struggling student, struggling reader, and it would have taken me forever to read, this is expository text, not alone, and then be able to answer the questions on top of it. So, if you take a look at the questions that they might have to answer on a passage of this complexity, this particular question is asking for the central idea of the paragraph, and it's not multiple choice. They have to be able to explain what the central idea is in written format and back it up with text evidence from the paragraph. The second part of the question would talk about what inferences they can make about the author's purpose, and then hopefully they make the right inference, or choose the right inference of that author's purpose, and can back up that with the best support or the best evidence from the passage. So, there's a lot of cognitive skills that go into students having proficiency or mastering grade-level standards with text complexity. So, when we look at how we did on the CASP versus how that translates onto the dashboard, the dashboard was released late last week, and so, our average student is nearly 28 points above standard in Language Arts. We grew the average student by just over 5 points last year, which is great. If you look at our student groups, a lot of our student groups either increased or maintained. We have no student groups in the red, which is great, because our students with disabilities last year were in the red, and they're now currently in the yellow, which is a great attributing to our work that's happening in the classroom, but also the work that our students are doing. So, we're going to talk about three main student groups and our average overall. And these are the three main student groups that our strategic plans focus around at our site levels. And so, we're going to use the analogy of a runner tonight. So, the average student is our lead runner. So, if you're in a race, you're trying to catch that lead runner, and you're trying to close the gap. And we're going to use our baseline scores from last year. So, the average student last year in TVUSD was 23 points above standard in Language Arts. Our socio-economically disadvantaged students were negative 4 points below standard, so they weren't quite there yet. Our special education students were negative 74 points below standard, and our EL students were negative 38 points below standard. So, obviously, that goal is to cross that at standards mark and close the gap. So, how did we do this year? The average student in TVUSD, like I said on the slide before, grew by just over 5 points. So, students, socio-economically disadvantaged students grew by 5.5 points. So, not only did they cross over that threshold mark, they actually gained on the lead runner by .3 points. So, they near- Special education students grew by over 10 points, which- So, you can see that we had some great growth, and our student populations narrowed the gap in each of the instances. So, let's talk about mathematics. So, you can see, again, with that chart, we outpaced the state and county. Based on state averages, you can see that a typical growth for a district our size is somewhere between 0 and 1 percentage points, and strong growth is between 1 and 3 points. So, nearly 50% of our students met or exceeded grade-level standards on CASP last year. In math, on dashboard, the average student grew by 3.6 points, and 9 of the 14 student groups increased distance from standard to maintained. So, this growth builds on the progress from last year. It shows that our conceptual understanding and problem-solving focus are making a difference, and it reflects aligned curriculum, targeted intervention, and grade-level and strand-level collaboration. So, let's go a little bit deeper into it. So, just like our ELA scores, we have a fairly large band of students who fall within that standards nearly met. So, they have some grade-level skills that they're really strong with, some that they're inconsistent with. Our dashboard, oh, sorry. So, an average student, again, I chose 6th grade, kind of right smack in the middle, what kind of math would they be seeing on the CASP test itself? So, you can see that that first one in the upper left-hand corner is really just, can you identify the equation, and what is the answer? So, kind of what we were all used to growing up in math class, right? And then, it goes a little bit deeper. So, the second question really has three parts. So, not only do they have to have an understanding of how to plot points on a graph, coordinate grid, they also have to plot them correctly, then find the area correctly, and then determine, based on that area, part C, a third of it, how much would that be? And so, you really have to get part A in order to get part B, in order to get part C, and there are multiple standards embedded in this type of problem for students. And these are all the right-there, find-the-answer type of questions. So, then, let's talk about the performance task. So, a typical student on a performance task, grade 6, is going to get possibly a dataset. So, this one gives us a dataset of first-choice and second-choice pets in the classroom, and ask the students to determine what that dataset means. So, how many of each got the vote? And then, they have to create a method to who is the winner. So, they have to kind of determine what is this information telling them, and they have to be able to explain their methodology. So, not only do they have to do the math, but they have to be able to explain their thinking. Then, the problem levels up. So, then, it's asking if you assign points to your methodology, who's the first place and who's the second place, and what would be the methodology for a turtle winning the competition in class? And they have to be able to not only find the answer, but explain their methodology. But wait, there's more. So, your classmate determines there's no point system in which a goldfish could win. Do you agree or disagree? So, not only do they have to figure out whether or not that goldfish could win, they have to do some problem analysis on if it's correct or incorrect, I agree, I disagree, and here's And it keeps going. So, now, the principal is bringing in a turtle tank, and here are the parameters of the turtle tank, by which parameters would that turtle tank fit in the classroom, and they have to be able to use, I believe, volume in this case, to make that determination. So, you can see that this is very in-depth, and it requires a lot of different standards to solve the problem, but more importantly, they have to be able to explain their thinking in writing. So, when we look at how that translates to our dashboard, our average student in TVUSD is 7.7 points below standard. We did increase our distance to standard by 3.6 points last year, and we do have one student group that fell into the red. This is our foster youth student group. They were yellow last year, I believe. Historically, this student group is not in apples-to-apples comparison. We have a lot of transancy in this student group, and so, this is an area of need. It's an area of focus for us as we move forward, and what supports are we going to give our students who come to us with maybe some deficits in math? So, let's take a look, again, using that analogy of the lead runner. So, last year, on the 24 dashboard, the average student in TVUSD was 11 points below standard in math. For socio-economically disadvantaged student, 38 points below standard. For special education, 101 points below standard. For EL students, 55 points below standard. So, how did we make progress this year? The average student in TVUSD grew by 3.6 points to the 8, under, sorry, negative 8 points below standard. Socio-economic disadvantaged students grew by 6, or sorry, 1.6 points. So, you can see that unfortunately, the gap between the average student in TVUSD and
He talked to me.
How's it going?
It's going well.
Good. I have a question for you. Can you describe your role and your impact along? And I know you have a TOSA that also works with you. Can you describe your role in impact in helping to close the achievement gaps of the vast majority of our subgroups?
Well, I think it's a group effort, first of all. And I have a great team here with the ESS directors. And I think together, we support our principals, which then support our teachers. Some of my role is to help with the professional development. But that's also with the coordinator. Our EL coordinator is fantastic. Crystal Filstra is amazing, and she does some amazing PD, along with our instructional coaches. But just to kind of oversee what they're doing and really try to meet the needs of our special populations. But again, it goes back to a group effort with our principals and our teachers in the classroom as well.
And, you know, we're in the red with foster kids in math. So what, I mean, what changes do you anticipate making for this upcoming year to move the dashboard from red to another color?
Well, I'm hoping to get to work a lot with our SWS team and Ryan Dureco, who does that foster youth and devise a plan where we can help with the foster youth and see what the best research-based strategy is for that population.
And Mr. Barham, I'd like to add, we're in collaboration right now with somebody from one of the directors at RCOE. Because our foster youth can be a very transient community, a group of students.
And RCOE is Riverside County Office of Ed.
That is correct, thank you. So we're working collaboratively with them to try and find some ways through actual technology to be able to help them, no matter which district they go to, to continue their learning. So that collaboration, I also feel with Ms. Waddell will be beneficial.
Okay. All right, perfect, Mrs. Waddell. And then I have a question for you, Dr. Velez, if that's okay. Dr. Velez, how much did the model of continuous improvement impact the raising of our scores? And can you describe what this looks like at a site?
I think it was dramatically impactful. I think we started the work about three years ago in terms of empowering our principals and really giving them the right information on how to appropriately utilize their instructional leadership teams at their site. And our outstanding teachers are talking about data. They're talking about individual students. And so I actually think that in alignment with the very specific work done through LCAP and our strategic plans, you combine those two things. I think those are one of the main reasons why we're seeing some of the numbers we have. Because some of the numbers are actually very impressive in terms of just if you look at ELA alone, some of our student populations have grown significantly. But I do think it's a major contributor.
Yeah, I just want to first thank our staff, our teachers, our school aides, everyone who interacts with our kids. Because when I saw these scores, I was really impressed. I just have one or two quick questions. Dr. Velez, or Dr. Woods, either one of you. I know each school has its own strategic plan. Is there a point where they might share with another school? In other words, if School A all of a sudden shot up in one area and School B is, you know, not so much? Assuming the populations are the same, do they have an opportunity to share with each other of what they're doing and, you know, their best practices? Because what may be great in one school could be great in another school if they even knew about it.
Mr. Short, that's a great question, and we have multiple avenues for that. We actually have our horizontal meetings. So all of our, you know, middle school and high school and elementary are getting together, sharing that. We actually have our district-wide leadership meetings that we hold approximately once a month, where they're having those conversations. But part of the most beneficial thing that I think we've started in the last couple of years is learning walks. So what's happening is our principals and our assistant principals are going to each other's sites collectively. And they are walking through, talking about their strategic plans, looking at the instructional practices that are happening. There's been such incredible benefit in that. This year alone, we started villages. So you have the north side, the south side, and the central into villages. And we have high school administrators walking in elementary classrooms and vice versa. So it's been a great growth and a learning experience for our principals. That's a great question. Thank you.
I forgot to thank our curriculum specialists like Mr. Ballywag. And did I see Emily back there? And Natalie, and all our principals like Dr. Lane. And all of our people, all of our people who are, people who have never worked in schools are not aware of how impactful a principal can be or a curriculum specialist can be. And I know we have a great staff. And sometimes we kind of don't reach out to them to thank them. But I have a visit coming up on Friday, Dr. Lane. So we're going to see some more good stuff. Thank you.
I have one more. Can I do one more?
I'm going to ask for board consensus because I feel like this was kind of pre-planned. And I've sent emails to the board before. And I know that we've tried to do clarifying questions. Is it a clarifying question? Are you going to call someone up?
No, I'm not. But there was nothing pre-planned about anything that I did.
I just want to make sure you're not going to call anyone.
Yeah, but I just wanted to go on. Excuse me. I want to go on the record to say that nothing here was pre-planned. But I have a question for Dr. Woods and/or Dr. Velez. Because Dr. Kamraski-
Can I get board consensus? Are you guys okay if he goes one more round? Okay.
Dr. Kamraski and I had the pleasure in our Accountability and Goals Subcommittee of listening to a lot of the strategic plans. But after the plan was presented, Dr. Kamraski and I got the boot out of the room. So I'm wondering if there was a struggling school after that presentation, if you had critical conversations with that principal after Dr. Kamraski and I were asked to leave? Just curious.
You know, I don't know if I'd use the word critical because we're always trying to get better, all of us. And I think the principals are looking at these scores and they're seeing where their school matches up with others. I think when you build a culture of growth, excellence, all those kinds of things, you're just trying to get better. And on the site visits, I see that every single time in individual classrooms, teachers working hard, kids working hard. I know they're going home and parents are taking care of them and feeding them and getting plenty of sleep and taking it seriously. I'm just so proud of these scores. I just think it's a great reflection of our school district. I really do.
Okay, good.
No more questions? Dr. Kamraski?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a thanks to everybody and Mrs. Brown for presenting. It's getting late, but trying to get it out right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. And for the record, the one strategic plan that I remember the most is Schlotman making it all about landing an airplane. Everything was about an airplane.
And can I ask the board? I had put the update on science of reading right after the CASP because it tied in together. Can we let Dr. Velez just report on that real quick? Is that okay?
I have public comment.
Okay, and then we have a public comment on that? The science of reading public comment? How many is this one?
First up is Jennifer Catalano, followed by Annalisa Buhaus.
It's a great thing. My name is Jennifer, and I just want to just say a few comments about the science of reading. I do want to thank the district for investing in the science of reading training through the Orton-Gillingham. This reflects the research has repeatedly shown when teachers are equipped with proven practices, students benefit. I do want to tailor it a little bit. I want to highlight the critical role of early literacy within the science of reading framework. We know that decades of research that, research that the best window to address reading challenges is kindergarten and first grade. This is when children's brains are most ready to develop the foundational skills of literacy. It's not just about pushing the students too hard. It's about providing support when it makes the biggest impact. In fact, 90% of students who receive reading support before the end of first grade go on to read at grade level. Yet, without early intervention, the reading gap only widens, especially after third grade, when students shift from learning to read to reading to learn. And we also know that 74% of students who struggle in third grade will continue to struggle into adulthood unless they receive targeted instruction. That's why first grade is such an important year, an optimal year for learning and building strong readers. In our district, however, we've lost our first-grade literacy specialists, and the loss is felt deeply across the district. Our teachers are trained in Orton-Gillingham and are delivering strong first instruction every day. But even with high-quality classrooms, do receive daily intervention. But many of them need more than one teacher alone, more than what one teacher alone can provide. Having a literacy specialist would allow these students to double-dip to receive an additional layer of targeted expert instruction right when it matters the most. As first-grade teachers, I think I can speak with a lot of the teachers across the district that we are simply asking for literacy support to be returned to the classrooms. We want our students, not just some, but all of them, to have every possible opportunity to succeed. Early intervention is key, and the first grade is our chance to close the gaps before they grow into long-term struggles with reading, confidence, and learning. And I do want to touch on what Lisa Brown said about when she was doing the CASP testing. And she was talking about how the sixth grader is reading a 12-paragraph reading. And then they have to go and they have to find evidence-based texts to support their thinking. Well, the kids can't do that unless they can read. So the decoding is really, really important in the primary, early literacy grade levels, like kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And I know that a lot of the teachers had that support, and they just really wish that we could somehow bring it back. I don't know if there's a way to tie it in with the LCAP with some kind of testing because I know that's where that, where the LCAP is right now, is tied to standardized testing. So I'm not sure if there is a conversation we can have for first grade.
Thank you.
Annalisa Buhaus?
Hi, my name is Annalisa, and I am a fifth-grade teacher at Nicholas Valley. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. I'd like to piggyback on Wet Den Catalano, how to speak about just the magical unicorns that our literacy specialists are and the important work that they do whenever they able, when they are able to work with our youngest readers. I'd also like to just point out that some of our other youngest readers are in combo classes. So thank you so much. I know you're looking into providing ways to get curriculum to our combo teachers so that they're not piecemealing things together. When it comes to the science of reading, we want to make sure that all of our combo classes have exactly the tools they need in order to make sure that they're able to meet the needs of those little learners. I thank you so much for the work that you're doing. We all know that reading is foundational. And if students don't master it early on, every subject becomes harder. By investing in quality curriculum for teachers, investing in our literacy specialists and making sure that they're with our youngest learners, we're able to support teachers and students and just keep our vision of moving forward with our youngest readers and helping making sure that they get what they need. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. So I agendized this because Governor Newsom just last week signed AB 1454. It's the new legislation that provides training for elementary school teachers in evidence-based reading instruction focused on phonics. And I know that this has been in the works for at least five years. A lot of parents are starting to get word of the science of reading, and there's a lot of questions around it. So I just wanted Dr. Velez to just take a minute and let us know where we're at as a district.
You got it. So Temecula Valley anticipated the law being signed a couple of years ago. And so we kind of have been ahead of the game. We utilized data and really started looking at other districts across the country that saw gains in literacy using the science of reading and that particular methodology. And we decided to implement the science of reading about two, two and a half years ago. So we have really invested and trained all of our elementary administrators, our teachers in grades K through 2, general and special education and the literacy specialist on Orton-Gillingham. And I know our two wonderful teachers that were up here kind of talked a little bit about that. And you'll often hear it being referred to as OG, but that's Orton-Gillingham. And many of you who have been on-site visits have seen a lot of the phonics, very systematic phonics instruction that happens in our classrooms. It's a really highly structured approach that breaks reading and spelling down into smaller skills involving letters and sounds, and then builds on these skills over time. It uses explicit, direct, sequential, systematic, and multisensory instruction to be able to do that. Because so much behind the science of reading is the incorporation of all of the aspects of literacy, not just comprehension. It really is intertwined with its comprehension, its phonics, and its many things. So TVUSD has continued to train all new general education and special education teachers in grades K through 2 through fall with, through our instructional coaches. Teachers are given support through coaching with our wonderful literacy specialists and feedback from the administrators, who are all trained in the program. So we've invested highly in this. We have a sustainability plan right now to continue that work moving forward. And especially with the new law and possible new funding coming with that, I think it's essential that we continue to focus in these areas. I think one of the important things that we've also noticed is that there are students at some of our secondary levels who may be in a special program, who may also benefit from something such as Orton-Gillingham. So we're looking at that for some of our special populations at the secondary level.
Can I make a brief comment? So I want to say I'm in full support. I think this is a huge win, and I appreciate the teachers who spoke to this. Dr. Velez did a great job talking about the track record of the program. And I looked into it and noted that states that switched to it completely, Mississippi, Florida, North Carolina, jumped 10 to 20 points in reading scores in just a few years. So I think that's really exciting. It sounds like there's grant funding that's going to be available. I really appreciate the fact that if our kids don't, one, know how to read and, two, know those times tables all the way to the 12s by the end of third grade, then there's something wrong. And so those are great goals to pursue. And I'm excited about this. So I just want the teachers to know I'm glad we've had this for two and a half years, and I look forward to great things. It's obviously the right track all the way.
Thank you. Is there any more comment?
First of all, I'm a big fan of Orton-Gillingham. But Dr. Velez, I have a question. And help me remember, the state is requiring some kind of a tool, if I'm not mistaken, to be rolled out to assess the literacy skill. Yeah, of like, maybe, I think it's maybe second grade. Am I right?
Yeah, there's a screening tool. Correct. There's a screening-
So what is that?
So there's a screening tool that the state put forward. The district had many different options in terms of which screening tool that they were going to use. And we put it to our literacy specialists. And literacy specialists did work with some teachers on-site to determine which one we're using. And I'm looking at Ms. Tapley. What is the name of it again? Multitudes, thank you. So multitudes is the one that we kind of landed on. And it's somewhat of a dyslexia screener and really looking at early literacy skills.
So what is it, what does it do exactly?
So it's an assessment that's given that helps us determine whether or not there are, which gaps there are in a student's literacy skills so that we have a greater understanding of how to meet the needs for that student.
Okay, so it's data-driven, and that data goes into the hands of the teachers and the literacy specialists so that they can-
That is correct.
So they can help the kids.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to thank, yeah, just like to thank you and Dr. Velez for genizing this, doing the deeper dive behind the scenes. I really love the technical aspects of the OG method. In fact, I just like saying OG. So, but I just want to thank you because it's really robust.
Number three? Do we have?
Caroline Huffman?
I just want to remind everyone whether D grade is being mentioned in this presentation. It's not because the district is debating bringing it back. It's because Joe decided it was worth bringing up. If memory serves, a parent approached him, asking why their child couldn't pass a class with a D. Rather than using that as an opportunity to explain what proficiency actually means, that knowing only 60% of the material does not demonstrate mastery or readiness for the next level. the next level. He treated it like a policy suggestion worth resurrecting. Once again, Joe thinks that all policies that existed before his tenure should be reassessed through his own political view, even though there's no reason to. The district in response took the responsible approach, using this as a reason to ensure all classes at the schools are following consistent grading practices. That's why the D grade is mentioned here, not as a proposal, but as a trigger to review grading alignment across the sites. The actual focus of this work is meaningful, calibrating grading practices in science courses, clarifying assessment expectations, and ensuring that grades accurately reflect student learning and content mastery. It's worth emphasizing that restoring the D would lower academic standards, not raise them. The district removed the D years ago for a reason. They wanted grades to reflect actual proficiency, not minimal passing. Using this presentation to revisit consistency across classes is good governance, but it's clear that only one trustee's instinct to still aim low, for the lowest possible bar, the moment an opportunity arises. So, while tonight's discussion is about alignment, fairness, and meaningful assessment, let's not forget how we got here. One trustee, a parent question, and a moment of, let's see if we can lower the bar again. The district's work is solid, and our students deserve grading practices that reflect learning, not politics, not spectacle, and certainly not arbitrary D grades.
And right now, we're going to have Mrs. Amy Ricken come on up.
Instructional leader. Good evening again. I'm going to go ahead, because Lisa teed me up a little bit. So, this is just a look at the next-generation science standards. So, before I get into the survey data from the, the grading practices, I wanted you to be aware of, if you look at the yellow stars, those are science standards which also incorporate math and English language arts. And so, you look at the complexity of this three-dimensional learning and expectation, it's a lot. I, you know, I heard someone say, like, this is hard. It's incredibly rigorous, and I want to give a shout-out to all of our science teachers, 6 through 12, who continue to take risks and put themselves out there in the classroom to try new things, to build new lesson plans. And I'm really, I'm really proud to, to share tonight, in my brief three minutes, what our teacher teams are doing. Five? What? Say it isn't so. Take that, Bellwigg. So, we, we wrote, Jaclyn Dolan, our instructional coach for science, shout-out to her, she's an amazing partner. She and I created a survey that we gave to our biology, chemistry, and physics teams when they came in September for our first curriculum design day. And in that survey, we gave our teachers, many of which teach in two different curriculums, so they might teach biology and chemistry, or chemistry and physics, and they were able to really delve in and provide some nuanced feedback to us about their grading practices. It also created a lively discussion amongst the teams. So, you had the biology team sitting there together from all three of our comprehensive high schools and kind of talking about their grading practices. This is kind of the feedback, as you can see it in that first column on the left, biology across the board, they're within a range. What I will say, the survey feedback provided very concretely is, at the site level, at Chaparral, at Temecula Valley, at Great Oak, our bits within, I think, an acceptable range. And one of the questions we were talking about is, how much does assessment kind of factor into the grade, the grade book? You can kind of see, based on the different categories, labs often count for assessment, because that's really hands-on practice. That's the data set that Lisa was talking about, and some of the CAST data that our students have to analyze and work through. In response to the D, not one teacher, biology, chemistry, or physics, had any interest in bringing back the D. And part of that speaks specifically to, they feel very strongly collectively that our students need mastery of the content before they move them to the next curriculum. And so, that would be biology to chemistry, chemistry to physics. The middle column talks about assessment retake policies, but yes, collectively across the district, in all three curriculums, they believe in providing retake opportunities. But there are some criteria, and it's a little more rigorous on some campuses with some teams than it is with others. There's a little wider expectation and allowability, depending on how robust a Saturday intervention program is versus kind of a CAP-30 or an intervention opportunity. But by and large, what most of the teams agreed upon was that there needed to be some participation in intervention, so potentially some reteaching, second instruction opportunities. And they really wanted students to go back and look at their first assessment, and see if they can make some test corrections and learn from that before they just sit down to take the next assessment again. Third column here is late work practices. And I was actually shocked, Jaclyn and I were talking about how tightly calibrated biology, chemistry, and physics were in response to this part of the survey. They all believe in accepting late work. There are obviously nuances to that, but really, the hard and fast line was, they will take late work up for variable partial credit, full credit, late credit, whatever is in their syllabus independently, but again, calibrated by site and team, as long as it's collected before the end of the unit assessment. So, once they take that unit assessment, they're not taking late work from that unit as they move on to the next unit. I wanted to just show you a brief overview of kind of the structures that we have in place. They look similar to math and to world language, which Joe Bellwigg already shared earlier this fall. But I feel like we do a good job, and I know statistically, based on what was shared tonight by Lisa, our teacher teams are working really hard. They're working hard to challenge themselves to improve as instructional leaders. They are embracing the SAVIS platform, which is a platform that we adopted as a district that has CAST-style questions, so they can build formative assessments in their classrooms using the same style of questions that our students are going to encounter when they sit down to take the CAST. And for high school, they take it one time in four years. And it's in a really impactful year when they're a junior taking the CASP for English and math, the science CAST, and often, Melissa can speak to this, juniors are preparing to take the ACT, they're taking the PSAT for national merit status. There's all kinds of assessment, and that testing fatigue is a real thing for our students. And so, for us to do whatever we can to prepare them for the familiarity of the platform of those CAST questions, we want to do that, and our teachers, our science teachers are doing a great job with that. This is what our science curriculum design team days look like. I want to speak just briefly to something that Great Oak and Vale Ranch and Gardner are doing that is now spreading across the district as a result of bringing our teacher teams together. Our middle schools use CER, which is Claim Evidence and Reasoning, as a writing strategy, and that's embedded in our district assessments, so our students are getting that strategy in middle school. At the high school level, Dr. Lane, shout-out, and Great Oak High School partnered with the Two-Feeder Middle Schools to bring Jane Schaefer writing, which we use in English IX, across the curriculum to science, and kind of provide some shared language and structure around writing. Chaparral was incredibly excited about that, and their biology team took that back to their campus, and that's something that they're also interested in pursuing. And then they talk all the other things, those late work policies and assessment retakes. And then we've seen the wheels. When all the wheels come together, and all of these pieces are kind of in motion, mine aren't, you know, excitable and moving, mine are just stationary wheels right here. But you can see that this is what leads to the increased student achievement, specifically on the CAST, which is what we're celebrating tonight. Questions?
Thank you. Where do I start? How many teachers would you say that were surveyed on bringing the D grade back that you said they don't want it to come back ballpark?
There were none, so we had 23 teachers that took the survey, and none of them were interested in bringing the D back.
It's good to know. I remember back in February, we first agendized it, there was a concern brought up, and I remember the two tension points I raised is, one, the innovation of the district going back years ago. The other one was inflation of grades. And one of the things that Dr. Velez and I discussed with Joe Bellwigg before it even hit the agenda was, it was your idea, Dr. Velez, to have site teachers surveyed. And I thought it was really good, so I'm glad I'm seeing that information come forward. I still wish the parents were surveyed, because I think the community should have a right into this discussion as well as the teachers, and I'm still going to remain that, that, maintain that stance. And if at a time and place comes aboard for that, I would still motion for that, to crank out a survey using Infinity or whatever, I don't know, whatever platform we can. But thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I have some.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment from being a parent that, back in 2010, 11, and 12, and then we went through, as a district, we kind of went through a phase where we were known as the greatest district in Riverside County, but test scores did start to slip, and we saw that we weren't as great as we used to be. And I, I think that maybe two or three years ago, when you guys made changes, that we've seen the rebound now, and our test scores are going up. So, I want to give credit to Dr. Velez, and the cabinet, and all the administrators. I know there's been a lot of changes in the last few years, and I think that you're seeing the evidence of what our district and our leadership teams are doing. So, I want to give a shout-out that...
Mrs. Weersma, you want to say something?
The only thing that I would add is, I would love to see that survey that addresses the D to the entire district, the teachers. I, I respect this information, I hear it and understand it, but I kind of echo the sentiment, and maybe we'll get there and maybe we won't, but I know sometimes teams of people are asked, but there's so many more voices that might have an opinion to look at. But thank you for this, it was a stellar presentation, and I really appreciate what our, our teachers are doing.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Having been a middle school teacher, I love the idea of the middle schools and the high school teachers getting together, because a lot of times, the, I know the transition is really hard for some kids, but once they, when they see that there's something going on that works where they're headed, I think that's really important, and it kind of sets the mood for them to be successful, and also helps to prepare them, you know, to know what's, what's on the horizon for them. And thank you for the presentation, Dr.?
No, not Dr. Nope.
Almost Dr. Ricken.
Mr. Barham, you had a comment?
Two questions. Thank you. It was really, really good. In terms of taking a test again, are these students, and quizzes, are these students taking the same test and the same quiz once they make test corrections? Is it the same?
No, it's not the same.
So, it's a different test?
Yeah, same standards.
Same standards, but questions are different, but assessing the same information?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why they have to work so hard at creating multiple examples.
Yeah, okay. So, that's number one. And then number two, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, maybe somebody in the back that does elementary, Anna, maybe you. Are, are, are elementary science students, is the curriculum NGSS-aligned, so that when they move forward into middle, middle and high school? I mean, is the curriculum aligned? Because I sense that maybe it's not, but I'll let you comment on that. Go ahead.
So, yes, it is aligned, but are we continuing to strengthen that alignment? Yes, because NGSS came out about the time of COVID, and we started a new curriculum, and so, we've had some, we've had some peaks and some valleys. We're still working on that alignment. That's an alignment that I think that all of us acknowledge, that we're continuing to work on, thanks to the work that Mrs. Ricken is doing collaboratively with our elementary, but acknowledging that that's still work we need to do.
And I think I asked this question way back last year. Are we providing the materials that support the NGSS standards in terms of doing investigations at the elementary level? Because I know we have books, I know we have curriculum, and we have books. I learned science out of a book when I was in elementary school, but this is NGSS, it's different. Are we being, are our students being provided the materials so that they can access NGSS standards?
Students are being provided the materials.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just told Dr. Velez, the parents can feel the momentum.
It's me again.
Yeah, it's you again. The parents can feel the momentum, so, of all this great stuff that you guys are doing.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to stick to my script and go fast. All right. The thing I wanted to point out here is, in January of 2024, a reference guide for physical education came out for the state of California. And one of the key indicators that was mentioned consistently as a thread throughout the guide was that, in some cases, the only physical activity some students are receiving in a day is the physical activity that they participate in, in their school curriculum. And so, overwhelmingly, this guide reinforces the idea that we have to build a passion in students for lifelong health and fitness. And to that end, that's exactly what our PE teachers are trying to do. So, the middle and high school requirement, because this is a secondary PE update, they are required by law to provide 400 minutes of instruction every 10 days. And for high school PE1, you can kind of see the eight California physical education content standards there. And excitingly, I can share with you that our high school PE team met three weeks ago, and Tim Mann and I supported the team as they worked through new units to address the content standards for combatives and self-defense. And it was a really exciting day of planning new and creative lessons for high school students around that particular content area to address the standards in, in that, that theme, combatives and self-defense. We do have some schools that have aquatics instruction in the pool, and we have some schools and programs that do dry land water safety. With the tight bell schedule that we have, and the passing periods, and the changing periods, and all the things, it is difficult, and so, I just add that in there as one of the challenges that our PE folks overcome every day. They also took a pretty extensive survey. Every school was represented in the survey feedback. Some PE departments answered collectively together, others answered individually. But in terms of their curriculum, and the credibility of what they provide every day through physical education, overwhelmingly, they all said either they have a well-structured and aligned curriculum that is clearly defined and standards-based, or 40% said, or 59% said, that they're developing but consistent, and their curriculum follows the standards, but there are some things that they could probably shore up. And I use the example of the combatives and self-defense as kind of one of those talking points amongst the team. In terms of building structures to support effective, effective grading practices, because we asked all of the other curricular teams, I also asked PE, how much does assessment kind of impact your grade book? And you can see kind of anywhere between 5 and 20% is the most consistent, with a couple outliers who have more than 30. But to that end, it speaks to the fact that participation, daily physical activity is really what our PE teachers value, getting students moving, working together, discussing curriculum and standards around healthy lifestyle and fitness. You can see our district-level support, what we provide in terms of curriculum design days. We just finished with our high school team's first curriculum design day, and our middle school curriculum design day is planned for, I think they picked February. Also, at the site level, they're working hard on the intervention and the makeup kind of conversation, but they've done some pretty extensive work around building online lessons for students who are on medical waivers, maybe with an injury, out with a doctor's note, or on short-term independent study. And so, those online lessons were built in Canvas, which can be shared across sites, which was exciting work. Mr. Schwartz, this should make you excited. 100%, overwhelmingly, every single PE teacher in our district who responded to the survey, either as a department or individually, said yes to bringing back the presidential fitness test. Test. They're excited to be able to celebrate physical fitness for students who have a passion around it. And I think because we just report annual data around the PFT to the state, that basically our students have participated in some of these criteria, you know, it's, it's not as exciting as being able to celebrate them with a certificate, you know, maybe even in an award ceremony. And some students, this might be the one thing that they get an award in, you know, if they're not as exemplary maybe in the academic realm. And so what you can see in terms of the president's challenge qualifying standards, we know what the events are going to be, but they have not yet released how to score. And so we can default back to previous scoring criteria in order to start up the president's fitness test again, but we would need to do some work around that. And then this is kind of the last talking point I wanted to address. So I asked them pretty extensively with an open-ended question, which really challenged them to put into writing what it meant to them as a PE teacher to have students be PE-ready. This is just a screenshot of a couple of those examples. But what you see basically is they just want kids to be excited about coming and moving and participating, doing teamwork activities, learning new sports. They're trying to be relevant by adding things like spikeball or pickleball, the self-defense techniques, and adding other electives like weightlifting, yoga, things like that. What supports all students being able to participate in PE every day is a universal best practice around loner PE clothes. And so our staff at each middle school and high school site have committed to, they will do the laundry every day if a student doesn't have their PE clothes, they will find clean PE clothes to give to those students, get them back from the students, and wash those PE clothes. So there's not an excuse for students not being able to change into PE clothes and participate on a daily level. And just creating a positive participation culture. So that's something we're working on in our curriculum design days to get kids excited about wanting, you know, to participate every day in PE. And that's it.
Yes, hey, a couple of questions. I'll be talking about the Healthy Student Initiative later, but in that process, I had the opportunity to talk to PE teachers, which was really helpful. And from what I've gathered, and perhaps you have too, is that in secondary PE, there could be work towards a universal rubric for something like running the mile. Because I think some of the different campuses have different standards or different ways about tracking things. So that was one thing that I got in the feedback, just more uniformity. Hopefully, we can work towards that for the collaborative goal, but I think all of us can, can agree that fitness is so important. And of course, I followed in July when they started talking about the Presidential Physical Fitness Test, and I know many of us hung above the bar and turned purple and participated in challenges that we've kind of done away with, and I think California's really lessened the emphasis there. Because I've gathered from teachers, they don't have to count reps. There are things that we did in the past that we no longer do. So if, as a district, if we're waiting for some things to dial in and make some new goals, what I could sense from the teachers is that they're all for setting the bar higher and higher with that, because I think with the stress, whether it's social media or the mental health issues, if we have our students on consistent opportunities to really be fit and be talking about it and enjoying it and doing the cutting edge to challenge them, I think we're going to see other areas improve. So I appreciate your work in this, and I'm excited to see what comes of it.
I had to look up spikeball, is that any fun?
Yeah.
Maybe I should be playing. You know, I heard of this new sport, chessboxing. I'm a huge chess advocate, I'm like, chessboxing? Anyways, maybe? Thank you.
Yeah, just that, I've been to some of our elementary schools where we have adaptive PE, and I think that doesn't get talked about enough, and it's really important for our, some of our kids who would normally not get that activity, that we have those people doing it.
Yeah.
I have a question. Thank you. So, in talking about PE-ready in terms of clothing.
I knew you were going to ask this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is, according to the teachers, because the feedback's important, is, does, does this clothing require a PE uniform?
Yeah, I mean, what's interesting, it's a great question, and it's one that Tim and I have been asking, you know, the teams. And it came up last spring was the first time I had the conversation with our sixth and our eighth grade middle school folks who were writing unit planning organizers and pacing guides. We haven't got to seventh grade yet, so our calibration isn't as tight. But one of the things that they all talk about is when students change, there's almost like a flipping of the switch of now I have to participate in PE. And many of, not surprisingly, many of our PE folks have friends in Hemet Unified School District. Currently, Hemet Unified School District is not having their middle school students change in the locker room. Students can, if maybe they're wearing, you know, shoes or clothing that doesn't necessarily provide an opportunity for them to be physically active. What they are reporting to our temecula PE colleagues is that the level of participation has dropped, and that instead of running, they're seeing more slow walking.
Yeah, for sure.
Because there's not necessarily that shift of, I'm doing something different in this class than what I was doing in periods one, two, and three.
Yep, I see that, okay, thank you.
Can I make one other quick point with that, piggybacking on that? It did impress me that the teachers really do feel like they need to dress out, and it totally makes sense. I just think the elephant in the room is that we've discussed issues with the locker rooms, and I think we need to take a little bit more of a defensive approach to be sure that if any student has issues with privacy, what is being done in the moment to address it? Because I think a lot of campuses don't want to talk about it and wait until there's that situation, but I think we need to be proactive, and that's a conversation teachers want to have, so that with the privacy, if there's that question, and a student says, where's the form, what do I do? What is that PE teacher going to say? They have to be safeguarded right from the beginning so that they're on the same page and not wait until it happens. So that's more conversation, but I'm hoping we can get there as well, so that there's clarity for everybody.
Right, I'm wondering if Mrs. Diaz maybe wants to talk about, in partnership, the two of us reached out to all of our middle and high school PE teachers and our administrators to make sure that they were having, do you want to?
Yes, just exactly that. They've taken that information back since our last meeting and the documents that we've talked about, Ms. Weirzma, and they differ across our sites in terms of dynamics of the layout, the footprint, et cetera. But the common message coming forward is what's available, how we access it, and how administration is supporting through that process. So those conversations should have been had or are being had with our PE departments per our discussion that you and I had a couple weeks ago.
Having been in the trenches and talked, talking to a few people, I think there have been some statements made where if you have any questions, here's the information, let me know. I just want to be sure that, again, if a teacher's in that situation where it happens in the moment, what are you doing in that moment as opposed to waiting? And then I think there's confusion where the forms can be found. I just don't think there's clarity yet.
We'll make sure that we get it.
So I totally appreciate autonomy.
We'll make sure that we get it.
Yes, that's all I want to do is dial in and make sure there aren't questions, because I've talked to enough people who are a little foggy, to say we need to tighten up that.
Yeah, so when Nicole Diaz brought that to me the first time, we created a Google form to send to each of the middle schools and high schools administrator who supports physical education. And part of that was literally a check that you have met with every single member of your physical education department, to familiarize them with each of the documents, the opt-out forms, and to also relieve the burden of responsibility that it's not, it's not solely on our physical education teachers. Because I think they were feeling a little bit of that burden, not necessarily, especially when they didn't understand. But that it's in partnership often with our counselors, because students go and talk to counselors, with our administrators, who are often the front line of, you know, receiving the email or the phone call. So we, we haven't had all 23, or all middle school and high school campuses respond yet, but I gave them a deadline, they have one more week before Thanksgiving break, actually it's this Friday, to be able to get that professional development. So I think many of them are actually planning tomorrow during PLC time. They're going to use that as an opportunity if they haven't already, and we know who they are, because we're tracking who's had those conversations and who's providing that professional development. And then I think the other thing is, Tim Mann is kind of an expert in PE, and I lean on him a lot for nuanced, you know, curriculum ideas and very practical middle school ideas. And so I, I would hope that our middle school and high school folks know that they can always reach out to us if they have any questions, and we want to partner with them to help with any of those issues.
Great presentation, thank you. Miss Amy.
And we are on number five. Do we have public comment?
We have three. First up is Caroline, followed by Annalisa, and then third is, I believe, Upni.
I want to address the proposed Healthy Student Initiative. Much of it is being proposed, nutrition, fitness, and mental health support is already covered under existing education code. Jen, this is your thing, maybe listen. Programs like the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative provide funding and structure to support these outcomes. It's also worth noting that Jen previously voted against an MOU with Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health, which would have directly supported student mental health services. Now, in an election year, she's proposing this high-profile initiative that reads more like a campaign platform than a substantive plan for students. Finally, I want to address the suggestion to ban cell phones, bell-to-bell. Students currently have access to their phones during the day, and there is an established expectation in place for communication and safety. Rolling back to a 90s-style approach where students are completely disconnected would be regressive. Phones are critical communication tools, especially in the context of school shootings or other emergencies, allowing students to reach parents, guardians, or authorities immediately. Removing that access puts student safety at risk. If we truly want to support student health, learning, and safety, the district should focus on implementing existing programs effectively, providing resources students actually need, including safe access to technology, and maintaining clear lines of communication, rather than creating politically flashy initiatives.
Next. Next is Annalisa, followed by Upni.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to hear that our district is introducing a Healthy Student Initiative. I'm hoping that this initiative includes education on how students can use technology at home in a safe and healthy way. There's a growing concern in our schools, the connection between student health, emotional regulation, and excessive technology use. Many of our students are at home on devices for over eight hours a day. As a result, they come to school stressed and anxious and dysregulated because they have a dopamine addiction that causes fragmented attention problems. The lack of grit, perseverance, and executive functioning is causing major behavior problems inside of the classroom. Students have an attention span of about 10 to 15 minutes because they're used to doom scrolling. I'd like the district to partner with parents and families by providing education on how to establish healthy technology boundaries. When parents understand the impact of excessive screen time, students benefit. Their focus improves, their mood improves, and their ability to learn grows. Thank you.
Last speaker, Upni.
I think I understand the intent behind this, it's a great idea, but my concern is, like, everything starts with like a thing, a lot of the, a lot of the framework which is in existence, I've already emailed regarding this, and I think a lot of what I emailed was reflected in Mrs., in the presentation we just saw. So my, like, I said in my email, I don't see an actual, like, you know, great, we want to do presidential awards, let's give everybody a medal, it'll take some money to, you know, print certificates, hold events, like, how, how are we going to go do, do that? We are in a deficit right now. We are continuing to spend money on things which is not necessary, not education-related. And this agenda item is also another example of AI gone really bad. Like, when you put in so many references, you should check what references you're putting over there. If you're putting broken links, and one person really got offended, and I gave them the idea, when you put an idea out there, like, you know, people are like, why do people listen to you? Or like, you know, when you're presenting an idea to somebody, there is a principle called the pyramid principle. Put your idea first and then put supporting facts, you know, that what you're supporting. In this agenda item, the rationale talks about mental health, talks about MHSA, talks about CYBI, the grant that this district already rejected. MHSA has nothing to do with the district, the county decides on that funding, so we really don't have access to that funding. And then it goes on to talk about obesity, mental health, and social, nobody is disagreeing that kids need more physical activity. Nobody's disagreeing, like, social media, phones are bad for kids. Nobody has disagreed on any of this. Nobody has disagreed, like, phones shouldn't be allowed in class, and I did send out that we do have a board policy in place where the phones remain, need to remain in the backpacks. Certain math classes I did go to, they have a little thing right by the door where all the kids are supposed to put their phones in there, like, you know, you don't need to use phones at all. So I, I, what I would have liked to see over here is, I, I just don't want to be like, you know, a lot of this stuff is already existing, like, Mrs. Weirzma, you've been advocating watchdogs, which was, which has previously been criticized for not being exclusive. I would have loved to see an idea over here, like, how about starting a program called Playground, Playground Pals, where like, you know, parents can come in, the teachers, especially at elementary school, kids love seeing their parents, like, you know, maybe you can have organized, certain kids might not be good at running the mile, but maybe if there's like a noodle race or something else, that activity. But again, equipment needs money. Like, whatever you need to do, I, I know, Ms., at the middle school, the teacher did raise a lot of funds for getting other fun activities for kids so everybody can participate, even if they can't run the mile or can't do the set number of pull-ups or push-ups. Thank you.
Mrs. Weirzma?
I appreciate everyone's feedback. I do think, my hope here is that we can pull pieces of this and see it evolve together. It's probably one of the least political things that we could agree on, is that benefits in increasing physical activity, decreasing screen time, thank you to the teacher who spoke on that, and improving the quality of food for young people. I do know what we have, for example, in terms of food, we have relationships with local vendors, we've got some great fresh fruit and salad choices. We also have had people point out, gosh, the hot dog is heated up in plastic, and it's gross, you know, and I know we can't be perfect as a district, but my goal is, how can we get the conversation started in these different segments to see what we can do better? It doesn't have to look like anything that I'm dictating, I think a group effort with all of us is important. Physical fitness, we've already gone over that, and I do want to say, in talking to a PE teacher, they mentioned the fact that there are times where appointments or counseling will happen and a student will be pulled out of PE. And that really hit me that, gosh, I wonder how often that happens? Because I do really believe that fitness and then moving their bodies and their minds is just so important. I probably say that because I grew up as an athlete and a dancer, and if I don't work out, I, I don't think as clearly. So it's, it's, that's just how we're designed with our bodies. And so PE, we know it's important. In terms of the phones, my youngest graduated a few years ago, so I know things have evolved since then, but they would come home and talk about students sitting on watching the Final Four, or full-length movies, or having that extra time where they pulled out their phone instead of doing something more constructively. I can't say that's where we're at now, but my hope is, what can we do? And I know in talking to Dr. Velez, there's been a conversation going on for five or six months, and that's great. I want to be brought into that, be updated. Even Governor Newsom, that I don't often agree with, looked at a district like Santa Barbara Unified. They've got a cell phone policy called off and away. It started as a pilot, and it's grown stronger every year. And what's so awesome about it is that you see initial complaints fade within two to four weeks, you see students reading at lunch, you see fewer discipline issues, reduced cyberbullying, calmer environments, and the state is asking us by next summer to have a policy. They're not telling us exactly what it has to look at, but we have to have one. Will we be like a district who decides bell-to-bell, and even at lunch, we're not having phones out, we're doing other things? I understand the concerns parents have with contact and wanting that, and I'm not saying strip them from every campus. strip them from every campus, but can we look at some of these different layers so that we can go where we need to go for the health of the students? Maybe that's something to survey. So, that wasn't quite long enough, but that kind of gives you a nutshell of what I'm hoping to achieve through collaboration.
And you still get two minutes twice. Who would like to comment first? Mr. Schwartz?
Just a couple of things. We already have the physical ed frameworks that come from the state. We also have Temecula Fresh Food, Pupil Nutrition Health and Achievement Act, which regulate processed and fried foods. The Phone-Free School Act was passed by the Assembly, Bill Number 3216. Every school district needs to adopt a policy to deal with cell phones during the day. I know some of our teachers have, like, a shoebag. When the kids come in, they put their phone in there. Some have cubbies, and from what I've seen, almost every teacher has some kind of a policy where the phones are away during class. Banning personal devices, bell-to-bell, I think ban is really a kind of a strong word. God forbid, a parent needs to get in touch with their child during the day, like when I was working in New York on 9/11, and people needed to get in touch with their spouses and their kids. Banning phones, bell-to-bell, would have been disastrous. Device-free environments that support undivided attention and real-world interactions, that is a big issue, but that's a parent issue. We can give all the education we want, but if the child goes home and mom says, go to your room and close the door, and their child, as the teacher pointed out, is on their iPad for eight hours a day or on their computer, it's not something we can control. We can give advice and we can point out the dangers, but once children get home, it's the responsibility of the parent. So, there's a few of the points I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll just take a slice out of this, outside of the addiction that phones causes, and I understand, you know, banning phones from bell-to-bell, maybe I'm against that, because if there was an emergency, you know, everybody should have access to the phone. I'm going to approach this from an EMF perspective, electromagnetic frequencies. That comes from my radiation safety background. Yes, it's non-ionizing, but I would encourage the public and the teachers and the admin, anybody else, to look into this. But you can have things like direct gene impact related to Alzheimer's. You can have fog, mental fog. You can have cognitive decline. You can have blood clotting association. There are just a whole slew of side effects that come with people in their phones all day long. And I'm not just talking about kids, I'm talking about adults too, even in the classroom. So I'm for less technology when it doesn't impede on instructional, you know, time, because, I mean, each teacher has their own specific methodology. And I'm not just talking about phones, I'm talking about iPads, they're EMF-emitting devices. Everybody look into this, but I am definitely for the phone part of this, 100%, for a whole different reason, on top of the one you mentioned. It's just radiation safety.
Thank you. Mr. Barham?
When I taught, I never had a problem with phones in the class, because I took them. That's what I did. And I don't know how we deal with that now, but, you know, the phone would come out the first couple of days I would take it, they never came out again. So, that's the way I handled it. But I guess, you know, I think, you know, we need to have something in place by 2026. I know that we have policies in place. I guess what I would be looking for, because I've made this mistake here on the dais, and I don't want to make it again, because I even said it in my closing comments last time, I am very reluctant to support any policy that comes from the top down, because we have done that for the last three years, okay? We have, the school board culture has been to write the policies, and most of them have failed, outside of, for example, controversial topics, which was written in conjunction with the staff, and it has succeeded. So what I'm looking for is, I am looking for policy development to come, as I said last month in my closing comments, to come from the bottom up. And so I am very happy to look at this, Mrs. Weersma, and in conjunction with someone else from the staff, as well as yourself, however you want to do it, because I think it's important, but I would like it to come from the bottom up. And that's my thought on this.
So I wouldn't disagree. Oh, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
We're all in support of this, and there has been legislation passed. So so far, I don't hear anyone that disagrees. We've got different ideas. The district has been working on this, and Mrs. Weersma's the one that brought it first. I don't think we need another subcommittee right now, but I think if you would spearhead working, seeing what the district's putting together, and I kind of, and then bring it back to the board, and not form a subcommittee at this time, just have you kind of oversee the cellphone policy. Would you be okay with that?
I would. I would be happy to do that.
That's an idea, I'm just throwing out there.
Yes, no, that's a great idea, and just a couple more comments. What is exciting is to look at the data, and we always talk about data being so important. So I just want to read a few nuggets to you. Southwest, or Southside Independent School District in Texas, a pilot program showed massive engagement gains, now expanding district-wide because they're doing kind of the bell-to-bell ban. Portland Public Schools' district-wide ban with pouches, teachers report the biggest positive changes in classroom culture in decades. Norwegian Middle School National Studies, strict bans reduced bullying by 40 to 60%, raised girls' GPAs, cut mental health visits, one of the strongest research-backed examples globally. The most consistently cited successful implementation of a strict bell-to-bell phone ban with publishing How We Do It is Orange County Public Schools in Florida. They're the eighth-largest district in the US, over 210,000 students. They went beyond Florida state law, which only banned them during class time and implemented more of a full-day ban, with dramatic reported improvements in focus, behavior, school climate, all of it. So I definitely don't want to dictate. I think from the bottom up, down, and from the top down, we can talk about it. I, as a parent, of course, would want my child to have something available to them, so I know that that can be an aspect of concern, so we can address that. My kids reminded me, back in the day, they also had little video cameras where they could capture video, and they ran around and played with that, but they didn't have those phones where you could go so many places and be distracted. So there's a, there's a way, I think, to get to a place of where we want to be, and I'm happy to join conversations that are already being done, because I'd love to hear what they're discussing, and then go from there.
So can I propose that, instead of forming a new subcommittee, can you work with Dr. Velez? Because Dr. Woods is almost out. I'm just going to propose this, and then I'll have your, just because, and that we have so many subcommittees. Before we form a subcommittee, can we give Mrs. Weersma a chance to work with the district and then bring something to us before we form? And that's just my proposal.
No.
Who's next?
My opinion's no, but here's the thing, I don't want to join another subcommittee, but in this sense, I really don't. But in this sense, if it's the cellphone one, I can come in with a lot of research, not, not, not like low-grade, but the best of the best that I can find, to substantiate my claims on EMF related to that. And I would be willing to hop in, because that's a skill set that you're not really talking about, that I could add to.
So, only because I'm looking, it's, the board decides, so this is just me proposing, the board decides, I would prefer not to form another subcommittee, but two board members can work together, as long as they are not working with three other board members. Could you guys put something together? And then if, I think, because we all agree on it, we don't need a subcommittee. I think you're going to put something forward, and if you can meet with district staff, and I see Dr. Velez nodding, are you guys okay with that?
You want to work together, Ms. Weersma?
It just cuts out back on, like, red tape and one more subcommittee, but that means that no other board members get to work on it.
I guess the only question I would have is, with the Healthy Student Initiative and looking at some of these other components, there could be a question for whether or not that could come into existence. I loved what the teacher said tonight about family education and training, and, and Mr. Schwartz is right, I mean, families have to, they have to be on top of what's going on at home. So, but I'm happy to join the discussion that's gone on about the phones, and maybe we can revisit a couple of these other things in another way. I'm open to all of those options.
Are you open to me working with you specifically on what I suggested?
On the phones?
Of course.
That's what we're, okay.
Okay, so we've got you guys.
Dr. Anderson, can I make a really quick comment?
Yes, and let me, the most, let's get some student feedback.
Okay, thank you. Really quick, I would just like to echo what Mr. Schwartz mentioned about the bell-to-bell phone ban. As a student, I hear discourse about this all the time on campus, like, pretty much every day when we first came back this semester, and I think that most students, including myself, can agree on this. We're all aware of, like, phone addiction and the negative effects of, like, too much screen time, but we believe that an entire ban is unnecessary and also would bring up those safety concerns that were mentioned. And currently, what's working within most of my classes is that my teachers, they don't take phones, but they make it clear that phones should not be visible during instructional time. And then if phones are spotted out during instructional time, then students are forced to turn them in or put it in, like, the phone pockets that they have hanging on their door. And I think that that fear is kind of enough for most students to just keep it in their backpack. I think that it also helps students with self-control, too. I think people should be given a chance to keep themselves in check before resorting to just, like, taking everything. That's my thoughts on that.
Do you guys do Quizlet on the phones? Do you do games that?
We do games on, most games are also available on laptops, so, yeah.
They all have laptops.
Well, I have, I just have one comment.
Okay, Mr. Barham?
So, I think bringing up the food was great. Mrs. Lash, we, we have relationships with local farmers, right? I'm just checking.
Yeah, our nutrition services department, that's all they do, is try to have minimized processed foods, get as much locally sourced produce as they can, but of course, all within quantity, you know, quantity demand, and then availability, and the food regulations, which are, but that's literally the entire department's focus, is all of those things.
Can we get away from plastic wrap?
It, it just depends, because those are commodities that we buy in bulk, and so when we can, we do, but there's also contractual obligations and things like that. So we do minimize it, but we can look into it.
I just think it's important to enhance those relationships with the farmers, because there's no pesticides, right?
Right.
There's no pesticides, and we're supporting, the district is supporting the local economy.
Local businesses, correct.
So that's why I think it's important.
And where these two worlds collide, I just want to make a comment. Our high school child nutrition programs are dependent, and I don't use that word lightly, dependent on students having cell phones. We serve 1,200 meals a day at each of our comprehensive high schools, and the only way that that happens is that they pull out their cell phones and they scan to go through the line instead of punching in their student IDs. So we would have a significant, it would be a significant impact to our child nutrition's department, who depends on students scanning to receive their lunch every day. So you'd have to change the bell schedule to make lunch longer in order to accommodate the food nutrition services every day on a high school campus.
And if I could just, Dr. Woods?
Real quick, can I add, Dr. Velez, and then, oh, sorry, and then you're, she asked first.
We'll go to Nicole. And one of the things that I'm thinking of with the, with the proposal that you've brought forth, Ms. Weersma, we're looking at a couple different things. So we're looking at our compliance with the law in regards to having a policy for cell phones, and then we're looking at other components of what you brought forward. I'm looking at them as two separate things. I think, number one, I do think that Ms. Dais, who has been working on the cellphone policy with administrators, with teachers, kind of working with student services, can provide some updates to the entire board where we're at. Now, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking you out of the equation, I just think it's really important you hear what's been done thus far, so then we can move forward. On the second piece, with the other components that's currently in the proposal that you brought, I'm hearing that there is an interest in all, in the district exploring the option of trying to create a policy and guidelines. If we get board consensus on that, then we, as a district administration, executive cabinet and directors, can start working on that and bring forth a proposal in that area that would work within the confines of our district. Because what Mrs. Lash just talked about in regards to those phones being needed for lunchtime, that is a component that I don't know that everybody is completely aware of. So we're more than happy to bring forth, work on a policy, bring that forward for feedback, and we can come back and revise it as many times as needed.
Ms. Dais, I'd be happy to meet with you after this as well, to talk about what you already have.
Can I propose, then, we've got Dr. Komrasky, Mrs. Weersma, I think board members need to be involved, because my biggest thing is, the board is elected for oversight, and I think it's okay if we collaborate with the district. So if these two board members will meet with Mrs. Dais and collaborate on working on a policy, and then will you meet with Mrs., or Dr. Velez about the nutrition portion? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah, I might also want to meet with Dr. Velez about the cellphone as well.
Yeah, that's what I said, you and, yeah.
Contact, are you saying it's Mrs. Dais, Dr. Velez?
I'm saying I turn it over to you and Dr. Velez and Mrs. Dais, so what you guys decide, and then bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, and Dr. Komrasky, it would probably be both of us, Ms. Dais and I.
That's what I'm saying, and then bring it back to the board. Are you okay with that, Mrs. Dais?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say, Dr. Anderson, is that in terms of the board policy, I just want it noted that we do believe that our current board policy on acceptable use meets the specifications put forward by the State of California and Governor Newsom. So in terms of having to update or change a board policy, we believe that it fits the specifications and scope of the intent of the update on the cellphone use. What we currently are doing is seeking information from our students and also from our technology committees, and really looking at what our sites have done, like Great Oak High School and Susan Nelson Rancho Vista High School. So I'm happy to share with you what we've done with that. I think we do need more time on those things, and it would be wonderful to provide you an update, so we can give you the scope and sequence of that work, so we can get your support and provide you feedback with that.
Okay, so I'll leave it up to these two board members to, and Lenay, to schedule meetings, and then you guys, and when you're ready, present back to the board with what you found. Any other, are we good? Good, okay, perfect. I like that, and I think that it is good to bring ideas. You did mention several times, it's an idea. I remember saying that before. This is an idea, we can discuss it, so it's good. Okay, it is, it is now 9:30, and I said at 9:30, we're going to decide what we will consider for the rest of the meeting. Let's see, what, I personally think that we need to remove item number 12. It's been considered three times. We've had public comment on it before, and it was brought back by someone that voted in the minority to keep it on the agenda last time. Do we want to keep number 12 now, or do we want to postpone that for another meeting? It's the...
People waited to speak on it.
What?
There's public, how many public comments?
At 9:30, the board is going to consider whether, what additional items we're going to see, talk about tonight, and which ones we're going to postpone. So the, it is in the purview of the board, to decide what are we going to finish, what do we want to talk about the rest of the night? So I personally think that one's been brought back three times, and we can postpone that till the next meeting. We don't have to bring it back a fourth time. The other one, we can postpone subcommittees as well.
I'm for postponing the rest of the agenda items. That's just me.
I agree.
Is that because you're under and I'm over on the time?
No, I have a bet with Gary, not with you.
Just for clarity.
Oh, my goodness.
You don't even know what it is.
Do you, can, what about, I wanted us to briefly talk about 10, because our next board meeting is organization. Can we just do 10 and then wrap it up?
Let's do 10 and 12.
10 and 12? I, I don't think we should do...
People have been waiting to speak on it, and I'm just going to keep, I'm going to keep bringing it back.
Not 12, we've done it four times.
I'm just going to keep bringing it...
You can't keep bringing it back.
Oh, yes, I can.
Okay, then we'll just keep postponing it, Mrs. Barham.
You know what? You can't, excuse me. Can I be recognized, please?
Yes, you're recognized.
Okay. I can, I can renew motions that have been defeated as many times as I want, okay? There is no reconsideration here about being in the minority. That is incorrect, and that came from David Huff, and he is wrong. Excuse me, I'm still speaking. So I want to renew, I will keep renewing this motion because... So, I want to renew, I will keep renewing this motion because it's in the best interest of the community, and I've asked Mrs. Dais to speak on it for three minutes, she said she can speak on it in one, so let's consider the motion and let's put it to bed once and for all.
You want to make sure it's like voted, no one wants to...
You know what? You're, you're talking about voting on something before it's even heard, and that's inappropriate.
So, we voted on this before, and it didn't pass.
Let's see if it passes, let's see if it passes this time, because I'm gonna keep bringing it back every time, let Mrs. Dais speak on it, she's been allotted three minutes, she said she can do it in one.
So, she's spoken on it before.
She's never spoken on it. She never has.
Oh, yeah, okay, so here's what I want to do. I want to consider, Dr. Komrasky, I'm ready to let the whole agenda go, too, it's 9:42, and we can postpone everything till the next meeting.
No.
What do you guys want to do?
You cannot postpone.
Mr. Barham, you're interrupting me.
You cannot postpone something until the motion is considered, that is Robert's rules.
Mr. Barham, point of order, you need to quit interrupting.
No, point of order to you, because you don't understand the rules. You cannot postpone anything until the motion is considered.
Mr. Barham.
So, if you would like to consider the motion, then you can postpone it.
Are you the president, I need you to stop interrupting.
You know what, you don't understand, you don't understand the rules.
This is embarrassing for you, I need you to stop.
No, it's embarrassing for you, because you're the president and you don't know the rules.
Mr. Barham.
So, let's do number 10 and 12 and get this thing over with, once and for all.
I just want to say something for the record, when you say that Huff, which is our, still our general legal counsel, is wrong.
He's wrong.
I'm just gonna pause on that, and I disagree with you. You are not a member of the prevailing party, but with that said, I'll let the board president continue to lead the meeting, because this is looking unprofessional.
Yeah, Mr. Barham, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to quit interrupting. I said at approximately 9:30, the governing board will determine which of the remaining agenda items can be considered and acted upon before 10:00 PM. Dr. Komrasky said he's okay if we postpone the rest, and we have, Mrs. Weersma has the non-custodial thing, I'm sure she wants to address that, but I'm asking, it's 9:44, what we can postpone to a later time? I really wanted to talk about, how are we gonna manage our organization, but you know what? Again, it's not up to me.
I think that's a really important one to do, too.
So, we'll start with Dr. Komrasky, you mentioned to postpone 9, 10, 11, and 12.
I'm up for hearing the public comments related to the agenda item, because it was agendaized, I have no problem with that, and I'm up for hearing the reorganizational item itself.
Two, one on 9 and two on 12.
One on 9 and two on 12.
Plus, we have 10, I think, general.
I'm up for hearing the people that came, but I'm just one member of the board.
So, I talked to, we did, I did discuss this in one of those phone calls that you, that Mr. Barham saw, was when an item is postponed or removed and we're not taking action on it, it's kind of, there's no purpose in taking public comment on something that we're not gonna act on.
You cannot postpone, you cannot postpone something unless the motion is being considered. You are out of order.
Unless what motion is being considered?
If you want to consider number 12, and you want to postpone it, you can postpone it at the time that it is considered. So, that is the appropriate.
Okay, so, do you want me to go through and, and just do it one at a time and ask each board member, do we want to wait, because?
That would be fine.
Our agenda forever has said, at 9:30, we're gonna stop and decide what additional...
Dr. Anderson, that is fine, but let's go one at a time and do it right, because you are not doing it right.
Mr. Barham.
I'm sorry.
You are out of, you've been out of order, interrupting the whole time.
I am not out of order, I'm just trying to get the rules right, because they've never been done right, sorry.
We can literally, we can literally stop the meeting right now and go home, Mr. Barham. There are a multiplicity of ways how to lead this meeting.
Let's go one at a time and do it, let's go one at a time.
Okay, so, so, my question is, Mrs. Weersma, do you want to consider this at the next meeting, or do you want to consider it now?
I'm fine to put most of this off until the next meeting. I think talking about organizational structure is important. I think that anybody who was here to speak on one of those items, if they're here for general public comment, they can comment on anything that they please, so they could still be heard, we do need to hear people that are here to make comments. So, there is the compromise that we're looking for. As for my item, yes, I'm, I'm fine to let it, let it go for now, because we've got, I think, several hours of meetings, first week of December, right? So, we'll be back here soon.
Thank you, Mrs. Weersma. Number 10, board consensus, I just wanted to talk about how we were gonna, oh.
I wanted to talk about how we were going to organize the voting at the next meeting, but if we don't want to, we can just, we have bylaws, we don't have to talk about it tonight.
I agree.
Do you guys want to talk about it tonight, or just stick with what we have?
I want to talk about it.
Is there anybody else that wants to talk about it?
There's no bylaw, there's nothing in the bylaws that say how we are to conduct the election.
So, I'm just talking about right now whether or not we're gonna postpone it, and I did talk to legal about it, so we can come up with something that night. We could come up with like, hey, we want to talk about it now, so, talked to Mr. DiMarco, or actually, it was Mr. Diedrich, and he gave us, he gave 100 different ways we could do it. Do we want to do it tonight, or next time?
My thought is, we've been doing this for years as a district, people have been voting in board presidents, clerks, vice clerk, new vice clerk now, we haven't done that previously, this has been going on for decades.
Just leave it.
This is super derogatory, it's not necessary.
Okay, if it, then let's not, we'll remove number 10.
Just my opinion.
I think we should remove number 11. And I've already said the reason we should remove number 12, and we can put these on the next meeting.
And number eight.
Oh, and number eight, board subcommittees, do you, does anyone want to talk about board subcommittees?
I'd rather talk about number 10. Let's just talk about number 10.
Wait, we, we're looking for, we're going in order, you said we were gonna go in order, so we're gonna go in order.
Okay, let's go in order, go for it.
So, 9 is checked off, 10 is checked off, 11, we can postpone 11?
Excuse me, did we get consensus on?
Yes, we did.
On number 10?
Yes, we did, I was one, Dr. Komrasky was another.
You two, Jen, you don't want to talk about it? Okay.
Okay, so there's three. Number 11?
I, I could talk about it at the next meeting.
Is that okay if we do that? Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna put you on the next meeting.
But I want to, I want to state, I want anyone here who wanted to make a public comment, I want them to have the ability to do that.
Okay, during general public comments, or, okay, absolutely. And then the last one, we've brought this back, it's been on and off. Mr. Barham thinks that he has convinced someone to vote the yes on this now.
No, no, I haven't.
Oh, okay. I would like to postpone this one more time, and go to general public comments and let the public speak.
I think we should give Mrs. Dais one minute.
But I need board consensus, I need three people, I need three people, I, I vote to postpone.
It's not considerate.
And then, Dr. Komrasky, okay, so, yep. So, now is the time, the governing board welcomes public comments, this is the time for open session public comments. Public comments are allowed up to a maximum of three minutes per comment in the order received, to a maximum of 30 minutes per item for comments on agenda items. And let's move it.
For clarification, is it that, is it that number 12 is being pushed to the next meeting, which is literally two weeks from now? Is that what's happening?
I'm gonna check with the attorneys, because this has been put on and taken off, and so, I just, I already asked about the majority, the minority bringing it back. The other question, can I just ask Mr. Barham a question about it?
Sure, go ahead.
We've talked about, Mr. Barham brought this idea that like the city council members have this way of like, if it doesn't get a majority, they don't consider it. But right now, I don't feel like you're gonna get a majority vote on this, so let's give us some time, let people think about it, and bring it back. Because if three people want it off the agenda, the chance that you're gonna get three people to vote for it is probably low, so we've already decided that's all.
All I can say is, is that we have to have a program. It is a necessity, and that's why I would like to give Mrs. Dais one minute to talk about.
We'll bring it back, the three, the consensuses, we're gonna bring it back.
Then I'll add to that with Mr. Barham, and instead of one minute, when we bring it back, give her more time, give her three to five minutes.
Yeah, I think that's fair, so, we'll bring it back with, and we'll, and why don't we start where we left off? When I make the agenda, we'll start with all of these items in order. So, it'll start with your item, because you were next, and then we'll go down the list. I'm gonna totally remove the reorganization, because, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out at that meeting.
How are we gonna figure that out, do you think?
That we talk about it and decide how we want to vote. So, the, the next thing is general public comment. Get to speak one time for three minutes, we've done this before, and someone filed a Brown Act complaint, and it was found that it was not valid, because if something is postponed or moved off the, the agenda, you'll get to speak on it next time. Is that good? Full-time, three minutes? Okay, who's 14?
Okay, first up is Jack Callahan, followed by Daniel Malina.
Hi there, my name's Jack Callahan, I'm a junior at Chaparral, and... Get closer to the mic, Jack. Make sure the mic's tight. All right. My name's Jack Callahan, I'm a junior at CHS, and I just kind of wanted to come up here and address this really quickly. This is my first time going to a board meeting, and frankly, I am disappointed. I'm not gonna, you know, personally attack anybody here, but at the same time, it felt like today, more so than addressing our educational needs, I saw a personal debate and political strife come before the students that you guys are supposed to represent and lead for. I don't, I don't deny that argumentation and debate is definitely going to always be a part of this, but the fact that, for that first half especially, it felt like more than any sort of discussion about our education, or our voices, or anything like that, it felt like you guys were discussing amongst yourselves against personal values, rather than upholding what would be best for our education. And I just hope to see that change in the near future. I mean, I'm, I'm starting to club about it and everything, because at this point, it's just ridiculous, because since eighth grade, all I've heard is just about political discussion in the school board, when it's a school board. You're supposed to be addressing our education and not national, state, local politics, you're supposed to be addressing us. And all I've seen is just those merging of different conflicts and values that aren't related to our education, and I want to see that change, so that way I can see my education become better while I go into my final year of high school. I'm a junior right now, I still got one more year left, and I really hope to see that change, but as of right now, I don't. So, I just wanted to come up here and demonstrate my disappointment as of right now with how this has gone. I'm going to be coming back next time and in future board meetings, and I'll be bringing more students with me, that's the point of our club. We are, we are enforcing student engagement in like local issues that involve them, such as our education, and at this point, we need that, because obviously, at least to me, it seems like y'all are kind of forcing past your personal ideals while we don't really have a voice. Melissa Chai is up here and she does great, but at the same time, her voice is extremely limited. We need to have that strength in numbers, and I will be bringing fellow students here to represent our voice and to show our discontent with how this has been going so far, and hopefully, that will spark a change, because none has been seen in recent years. Thank you. Next up is Daniel Malina, followed by Annalisa.
There we go. All right, good evening, board. I'd like to address the item number 12 that was removed, I don't understand why we keep bringing it back, and Emile made it very clear today that he's just gonna keep bringing it back. You know, I haven't seen anybody from the community support this. One person, you're related to her, and her child will not be impacted by these services provided in our district. And I think that it's important to note that when you read through the policy that was presented, there is a section in there that says, following TV, TV USD's Rules of Parental Involvement, but then there's another section that says, TV USD will not stop somebody that wants to self-bring themselves to the program. So, if, if this is about drug abuse, adults don't even self-admit themselves, so we think that children are going to? I'm not sold. And UHS has already violated their trust with our community, and you seem to want to represent them over the community, and I have an issue with that. So, as long as you keep bringing this forward, I will keep speaking against it. You know, Dr. Anderson, I, somebody told me that you think that I have this vendetta against you, I really don't, you know? I dropped my podcast, the last two episodes, I recorded, I haven't even put them out, because it's just, I edited them, I listened to them, and it's really an attack on you, and I just don't want to put that out. But then, when I was watching the meeting today, and I watched how you basically opened up by blaming the community on the failures of the Dais, gaslighting us for the fees that you're bringing forward while you were sitting next to an attorney, and the bill was just racking up, while you were saying that it's our fault? You also said something about you needed to speak to an attorney because you heard of some sort of FBI, some, some sort of report to the FBI for, for something. But what's interesting is, why would you need to speak to an attorney about that if there's no validity in it? Like if somebody right now called the FBI on me for some sort of weird collusion, I wouldn't need to speak to an attorney, because it's just not true. So, I find it odd that you posture on certain things, and then on the Dais, you kind of show us your hand, and I don't even think you realize that. Shout out to that last gentleman, that young man who had the courage to come up here and speak to the adults in the room, because a lot of students won't do that, and I hope he brings his friends, I hope he brings more students. Maybe then, we will get some real leadership in these seats. I mean, Melissa Chai does a great job, I mean, I would love to maybe replace everybody with some of these high school kids. I don't know what we need to do, but this is just, it's embarrassing at this point. I've supported most of you, I still like all of you, I respect everyone, even the staff does a great job. Ms. Dais, I'm sure with that UHS thing, you put a lot of work and effort into that, and I will listen when you do present, but we need to do better. Thank you.
Next up is Annalisa, followed by Ron Larson.
Thank you for letting me speak again. Once again, I'm Annalisa, and I'm with a fifth grade teacher at Nicholas Valley Elementary School. I wanted to address an issue that is quietly but deeply affecting our schools, the growing impact of student-caused violence in our classrooms. The toll it's taking not only on just the children involved, but the students who witness this violence and staff is really getting difficult. When violence erupts, whether it is hitting or throwing objects, flipping desks or making serious outbursts, it doesn't only affect the moment, it sends shockwaves through the room. Other students become anxious, distracted, and on high alert. Some worry it could happen again and again. Others begin to associate school with unpredictability rather than safety. Over time, this chronic stress affects their ability to learn, their confidence in the classroom, and even their willingness to participate. While teachers are, and support staff are deeply, they care deeply about every child, they are reaching a breaking point. Many are managing repeated crises on the top of full classrooms, academic expectations, and emotional needs of dozens of students. They are evacuating rooms, absorbing aggression, and carrying the weight of trying to keep everyone calm and safe. The emotional exhaustion is real, burnout is rising. Talented educators are questioning how long they can continue under these conditions. Teachers are no longer willing to silently accept these dangers. But please don't take my word for it, see for yourself, we have amazing educators at the district office level. Invite them to come in and sub for a day in any of our classrooms. See for yourself why kindergarten students are flipping desks and cursing at teachers just because the teacher told them no. Or sub in an SDC class and see why teachers are having to evade violent students who are trying to stab them with scissors, kick them, and throw heavy staplers at their head. By having folks at the DO come in and sub in our schools, our district could save some money on subs and help keep them relevant, because most of the district folks have been out of the classroom for a little while, so it might be really helpful for them to see what kind of dangerous behavior is happening in the classroom. I truly believe that having them come into the classroom will help them make really important decisions. important decisions for our students and our staff because the class, let's see, we won, I'm so sorry, I'm so tired. I just wanna thank you very much for listening to all of us tonight. This is an important matter. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Ron Larson followed by Caroline.
I got a green light, eh? Good evening, Dr. Anderson, Board, Dr. Woods, Dr. Velez, executive staff and fellow citizens. My wife and I moved to Temecula 24 years ago. We selected Temecula based on three criteria: great public schools and staff, a community that welcomed all irregardless of ethnicity, religion or sexual orientation, and a strong city council and staff whose focus was on the quality of life for everyone in Temecula. These past eight years, politics has broken our national spirit and our collective identity. I have no use whatsoever for the far-right nor the far-left. Too many elected officials are only interested in what benefits them. They are failing all Americans. We need change and we can initiate those changes at the local level. We only need to find the courage to do what is right because it is right. Our country was founded on the principle that all are created equal. We are at a critical point that will determine the future of the United States. Our democratic republic will survive or die based on our next steps. The challenge facing our school district is in the hands of U5. You can make an effort to be reasonable and find a solution that serves our community and our schools, or you can follow an irresponsible and destructive National 2025 Agenda. Separation of church and state is a cornerstone of our country. The government has no business interfering in the churches and the churches have no business interfering in schools. Temecula residents are fortunate that they have three options for educating their children. They may homeschool them, they may take advantage of our superior public schools, or they may enroll them in any of our excellent private schools in the community. For those families who can't afford tuition, I suggest the private schools and churches step up to the plate and pay tuition for those who cannot afford it. At this time, I think we need to move forward and put Steve Schwartz on the board for next year.
Caroline followed by Jennifer.
Jen and Joe, I heard that you guys were at the No Kings Protest at the beginning or middle of last month. A little surprising if that's true, but we welcome you. Joe, Jen, Joe hasn't served for three years. He only served for two and a half because despite your constant claims that the recall was unsuccessful, it was in fact, successful. Melinda, you can't excuse attorney costs by telling the public not to file complaints. These meetings are chaotic at best and shit shows at any other time. Joe, I love how it's apparent you don't listen when actual parents speak because I addressed that the D grade does not show proficiency. Additionally, when a student receives a D, they are passed which means they aren't eligible to retake. Yet you want to poll parents and give power to parents who support their students just barely passing? Okay. Jen, your obsession with students in locker rooms is bordering on disturbing. FYI, Great Oak, from my understanding, phones are required to use their cellphones. School ID is digital, hall passes are also loaded in the school app, cellphones are built in. You wasted 12 minutes deciding if you should table things. I'm gonna just dump them. Oh wait, no, I get to address number nine because I didn't get to do that. No one's trying to abduct kids. We already have a policy in place with non-custodial parents. I don't know when the last time you registered your kid, but you put it in there, there is a box, a tick, if there is a legal reason that somebody can't, but nothing prevents a parent from also providing their information to register their child. Okay? So it's just performative BS. It's just like, come on, guys. And Malzabay is back there. Good job, boy. I can have the rest of my time if you'd like.
Jennifer Catalano followed by Drew Williams.
Hello again. I was here last month talking about school safety. I'm here this month to do the same thing. So I'm here to talk about school safety and when we talk about school safety, we recognize that it extends far beyond locked doors and emergency drills. It includes the everyday realities that staff and teachers face that directly impact student learning, teacher well-being and the overall stability of our classrooms. Since the beginning of the school year, our elementary buildings have recorded 36 incidents of workplace violence involving students in general education settings. These incidents include biting, slapping, scratching, hitting, punching, kicking, shoving, grabbing clothes or arms, leaving welts and bruises, causing bleeding, stabbing with objects and making verbal threats towards teachers and peers. And of those 36 cases that were reported, those were the only formally documented ones. There are many more that go on that are happening in the classrooms where teachers just are going with the flow and they're not documenting them. In multiple situations, teachers have had to evacuate entire classrooms just to de-escalate one child that's in crisis. When this happens, instruction stops, learning stops and the well-being of the 20 and 30 other students is compromised. These students deserve a safe and predictable, predictable and calm learning environment, one where their education is not disrupted by repeated unsafe behaviors. Safety is about listening. It means taking concerns seriously, even when they are inconvenient. It means acknowledging that the adults in the classroom, the ones who spend every moment with students, often see problems emerging before anyone else. When teachers report that a child is escalating, when they say that something feels unsafe, when they say, "We need help." We must listen. We cannot dismiss them or be, or told, excuse me, to be told or simply just to handle it or document it. This is not a place of blame, but we need to come up with some solutions. Our teachers are doing everything they can every single day, but they cannot do it alone. It is time for change. We need to prioritize safety in meaningful, actionable ways to ensure that both students and educators have the support they need. Every child deserves a safe place to learn and every teacher deserves a safe place to teach. I want to conclude with this. I want to remind everyone that just two short years ago, a first grade teacher by the name of Abby Zwerner was shot by a six-year-old student in her own classroom. In the days leading up to the incident, Abby repeatedly reached out for help and was not supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Drew Williams. I'm an ESN Special Education Teacher and this is the second time I have come here to talk about staff and student safety. The situation in our classrooms is worse, not better. And I know that you care, but the injuries happening in our classrooms are not accidents. They are not just part of the job, they are the direct result of a system that is broken and is willing to absorb staff as collateral damage rather than build safe conditions for everyone. Here's what that looks like in a real life for teachers, staff, site admin and principals. We have been kicked, punched, spit on, vomited on, been urinated on, had feces thrown at us. We sustained fractures, dislocation, bite wounds, concussion, injuries that require stitches, injuries that require hospitalizations and more. I have gone to urgent care. I have gone home with injuries I have to explain to my family and children. I joke about it so my friends and family won't worry, but I'm not okay. I don't sleep well anymore. I have panic attacks on my way to work, at work and after work. I am afraid for the well-being and safety of my staff and students. I keep showing up, but the cost is now showing up in my body and in my mind. I am not the only one. Staff are operating in such a constant state of crisis that disassociation has become normal. They are not calm, they are shut down. This is what happens when a nervous, this is what a nervous system does when it's been pushed past its limit. Repeated trauma causes the brain, causes the brain to change and erodes the very skills we rely on in need to regulate kids in crisis: judgment, impulse control and emotional steadiness. When we normalize staff trauma, it directly undermines student safety. I have documented injuries and near misses. I have asked for adequate staffing and one-to-one support while IEPs clearly call for it. Instead, I've been asked to make do and assist with crisis in other classes and even when, and even cover other classrooms while mine is left short and I have and will continue to do it. I have been assigned students whose documented supports we struggle to implement in a room and I can't sustain. The pattern is clear, things happen when something goes very wrong. Then, we are in damage control, sometimes punitive, instead of following a plan. Let's be honest about what this means for our children. Staff safety is student safety. When we are understaffed with multiple students in crisis, no one in that room is safe. Not the child in need, not the other students witnessing the traumatizing events, not the staff trying to support and stand between them in harm with no backup and no current training. Provide staffing that reflects the behavioral risks in the room. No student, especially a high need student, should be placed without the supports they need. End the culture of blame. We can't ignore safety issues. We need to start fixing the conditions that create them. This includes building real recovery protocols for physical and emotionally injured staff, not just filing a report or being told to handle it. We are committed to our students and staff. We care deeply about them, but our commitment cannot be the safety plan for this district. We cannot keep running a high-risk dangerous system on the backs of people who are and will burn out. The Board and this community have a choice. Treat these injuries and this trauma as the cost of doing business or recognize them for what they are, a red flag that the system is broken. I invite you all to come to my class for a day.
Brendan Kelfiss followed by Sarah Bell.
Good evening. Is this on? Yes, it is on. Well, first off, good evening, Board President, Trustees, Student Board Member, Staff. Thank you for allowing us all to speak tonight. This is my first time at a meeting and honestly, it was a great learning experience. I want to start, I have a prepared speech, but before I start that, I just want to say that I respect each and every one of you for everything you do. You know, it's one thing to run for local elected office, it's another thing to win and actually do the job that we are elected to do. So the following comments, know that they are with the utmost respect that I have for each and every one of you. I am fortunate enough to be Mayor of this wonderful city, but here tonight, I am come as a parent and as a community member. I want to offer a simple reminder, a reminder of why each of you chose to serve on this Board. I want to remind you simply of the mission, vision, values that define TV USD, the district I grew up and graduated from. Every decision made in this room carries impact, not some abstract fake impact, but real impact on real students with real futures. When we step back from the disagreements, the politics, the pressures from outside communities or even from local political action committees and simply step away from the noise, we're left with the same foundation, our responsibility to put students first. The TV USD mission is to elevate experiences, opportunities and each other. Your vision strives to create high levels of learning in a welcoming collaborative environment for our future leaders and your values, opportunities, experiences, care and leadership aren't just words printed on our TV USD website, they are the guiding principles for every decision that is made in this room. Leadership, especially in children's education, is far from easy. It asks you to rise above personal interests and individual viewpoints. It asks you to listen to even when, listen even when the room or topic is tense. It asks you to make a decision even when the path forward isn't perfect or clear. But most importantly, leadership asks you to model the behavior you want reflected in every classroom across this district. Students don't just learn from the teachers, they learn from all of us. They watch how adults handle conflict, how we treat one another, how we collaborate and how we pursue common goals. They look at you, their elected leaders, for an example of what it means to lead. So as you make decisions for the rest of your time on the Board, I encourage you to align every conversation, every item placed on the agenda with one guiding question: is this what is best for the students? If the answer is yes, then the mission is alive. If the answer is yes, then the vision is being followed. And if the answer is yes, then the values of our TV USD are more than statements, they are action. Being born and raised here, I know personally that Temecula has been built on a community, on the pursuit of excellence and on a shared belief that our children deserve the best. When the Board leads with clarity and a student-centered mindset, this district thrives, our educators thrive and our students thrive. The future of Temecula starts here in this room and it depends on you putting the students at the heart of every decisions. These students will become adults and those adults...
Time. Sorry. Next. Sarah Bell followed by Justin Fetrow.
Mayor, I think I lost my speech. Very well said, though. I waited a long time. This is my first Board meeting as well, but it means a lot to me because I have four kids, talked to many of you, range age from four all the way up to 15. And first thing I want to say is ma'am, I just wanted to direct it strictly to you. You're the President, you're the leader. Leadership is not easy. I've seen many mistakes tonight, I felt like, from a leadership perspective. I don't say that as a negative, I just say that as a positive because we're gonna make mistakes. But what I did see to encourage me is this whole entire staff, including a student and another student that came in, and the community has your back. They have passion for it. I spoke with her, she's a gem. The first time I met her at my kid's school, nothing but love for the kids, nothing but, everything was focused on the kids, just like the mayor said. We need to start asking ourselves as a community and as a governing body, is it about the kids? If it's not, and we're not focused on that, I don't care what politics you're in, I don't care whether you get along with Governor Newsom, I don't care whether you're Republican, I don't care whether you're a Democrat. I care about what you're doing for my son, what you're doing for my daughter and the education that they're getting and that you're gonna provide for their future. Every single teacher in here, I have so much respect for because they're underpaid and they never get appreciated unless it comes on graduation day. Graduation day, everybody loves them. Other than that, nobody really even looks at them, says thank you. Here's some class, items that you need for your class. So with that being said, I don't want to waste the rest of my time. My son's basketball coach got fired. I'm not leaving this subject, I want you guys to understand this, I'm not leaving this subject until I find out answers. If there was a sexual assault, I want to know. I don't care whether you give me the backstory, I don't care any of that. Because when my daughter was at CHAP, the same thing happened at CHAP when she was on the girls' basketball team. Now my son's on the boys' basketball team. You guys tried to put it under the rug by saying, hey, there's an email that came out, it's gonna go up to CIF. It ain't going up to CIF. If it goes up to CIF, I'm gonna go to Congress, I'm gonna have a congressional investigation over it because I want answers. I don't want this swept under the rug. My kids are affected by it. Our community is affected by it. We need answers, not CIF. Not going up to CIF and saying, hey, give us a investigation on did other kids get brought here to this school. I don't want, I don't want something smoking mirrors. I want to know, was there a sexual assault? Did the athletic director know about it? Did he do his job and did the principal do their job? Not just the coach, he's the bottom line. I said that at the school that day and I'll keep on saying it. And when I do my congressional investigation, it'll go up to them too. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay followed by Upni.
Is this on? Okay. Good evening, Board. I'm a community member, a taxpayer and a constituent in Ms. Weir's Ms. District. I also live in a brand-new development of nearly 100 new homes, new families, new voters and new voices in this community. I plan to currently run for HOA Board and I regularly speak with many of my neighbors. I want you to know clearly and directly, the overwhelming majority of them supported the MOU that got postponed tonight. This is the third time that this has come before you and I'm urging you to just revisit it. Both state law and our own Board policy already require the approach this agreement supports. Ed Code 48900.5 requires schools to use interventions, counseling and support services before suspension in most cases. Ed Code 48915B allows expulsion only when other means of correction aren't feasible. TV USD's own Board Policy 5131.6 mirrors this and requires immediate parent notification and parental consent before any student receives intervention services. A few months ago and then again today, the same viral video is being used as the supposed evidence against this partnership. That single video was taken out of context to claim RUHS would transition kids while the many positive and accurate testimonials about their actual work, drug and alcohol intervention and youth support are ignored. This... This misinformation keeps resurfacing, but the facts haven't changed. What's most concerning is that this misinformation is now being used to deny parent choice. Some conservatives want all parents blocked from a free state aligned support service simply because they personally don't want it. That is not protecting parent rights. That's removing them. And let's be clear. If a student self refers off campus, that is outside this district's control, using that hypothetical fear to block a parent consent required service on campus only harms the students who are here now, kids showing up to school drunk or high who urgently need intervention. And I'll be honest, it's really hard and tiring to hear these extreme hypotheticals like, what if Johnny suddenly wants to be Jane, and then blaming RUHS for that? That is not reality. If a student wants an outlet, they can find one online in seconds. RUHS is not the cause of these fears, and we must stop chasing imaginary scenarios instead of addressing real substance abuse issues. The MOU is not about gender affirming care. It is strictly for drug and alcohol intervention and only with explicit parental consent. RUHS provides this at no cost. Paying outside vendors would be unnecessary and fiscally irresponsible. Denying this a third time doesn't change our obligations. It only withholds the resources we need to meet them legally and responsibly. For student safety, parent involvement, and alignment with ed code, I strongly urge you to revisit this MOU. Thank you.
Last speaker, Upni.
I would like to start by commending Jack and Melissa. Every time a student comes up over here and speak, it really gives me hope and it makes me believe kids are all right. The adults could learn a little bit from everybody. And as Christmas is coming up, I'm actually going to give you guys, all of you, a better book. I planned on buying it earlier, but it just went on sale. I'll give each one of you a copy. It's called Soul of Civility. And I think it'll help better than having any rules, regulations, laws, and just reading how to be civil with each other. And one important thing is, I think which all of you are lacking is social capital, where a lot of information, like, you know, you're like, oh, let's form a committee. Let's do this. A lot of these can be actually sorted out in like two minute conversations. I had, if you remember, I had emailed you in January about the science of reading because I read the same study about Mississippi. There were like articles, like, you know, within three years, they were able to do a lot. I never heard back from you about it, like whether it was, because I did mention, I don't know what the district does because my child started in the middle school. She did not go here in the elementary school. But just as I was walking out, I don't know Mr. Diaz very well. I had a five minute conversation with him outside, and that's why I never followed up with you after that. Because he did like, you know, mention how they utilize science of reading. And I did ask him, is there anything the parents can do to ask for programs? Or are there any grants available since it wasn't law at that point? Like, you know, maybe we can be the pilot district if there's any money available. Maybe we can get it for our teacher training. And that was a five minute conversation, no committee, nothing. And he did say like, you know, whatever they can, they are doing whatever they can. So that is another thing, like you guys really need to earn your social capital. And there was a mention about Prism and the training and about sanctions. I did read up, all of this is public information. There's a system called Pacer. Any lawsuit you're interested in, you can go in and read everybody's declarations, whatever it is. What did the state attorney general say? Like, you know, okay, yes, they took off the FAQs. Prism is a third party program. Mistakes can happen. There was a devil, a deal with the devil problem. All of you approved it, and it came up with the parent. When the parent brought it up, we took action like, okay, we won't give it to the next person. Mistakes do happen, and that's why we have policies or recourse. How do we go about it? And then another thing, we've discussed cell phones quite a bit today. I did look up. I was like, how are we doing without cell phones? They've been around for a long time. There is board policy 5131. And we don't need an extensive study about EMF or anything. We already agree, like, cell phones are not good for like, you know, whatever reason. Not even like medical reasons. And another thing, we keep on talking, like, you know, you never suggest to a doctor, a dentist, or anybody else how to do the job. But we strongly feel like parents should have like a voice in grading practices, not the people who have earned their masters, PhDs, and they do this day in and day out. Like, we feel like, you know, wish parents should be served. You have voice in your own child's voice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have negotiations update?
Just to share with the community, Dr. Anderson, that we'll meet with TBA for negotiations again on December 5th. And we'll meet with CSCA for bargaining on December 10th. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board member comments? We usually go in voting order. Does anyone want to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
So with the drug rehabilitation program that we need in this district, I am looking forward to hearing what Diaz has to say. And if this board, because we've remained steadfast against this specific resource, I'm interested to hear maybe what Jen has for alternatives because you're on the drug awareness committee. So that's my expectation, is if it's not this, what could you possibly bring forward as an alternative? And if not, Mrs. Wiersma, the board, the district, the staff. Because sometimes if a board doesn't want to go one way, it might be healthy to give two or three options and say, okay, maybe we can pick this one, or maybe two MOUs, so that parents say, you know what, if I don't like this program, maybe I do like this one. Just again, going back to flexibility of the board, I'm looking forward to see this. Because I think drug and alcohol rehab is absolutely necessary. And it also helps lay the infrastructure of something I'm already working on with Just Caponegro and Brian, Director of Security, on a whole other program that I'm going to bring to the board in the future. So this is very important, so make no mistake about it. At least for me, I'm not pushing this off at all. I want to know alternatives. So that's just my thought on that. The young man that came up with the defensive gear, working with sped kids, I do want to visit your classroom. Thanks for doing that. And on that note, just know this, that on one of the committees, I heard Mike Brewer complain about the same thing. And because of his comments, and I reached out to him, and he reached out back to me, I joined the safety subcommittee. So thank you for coming up. I really appreciate it. I was going to say, if you need a volunteer, I was about to say it, but I know it wasn't a joking matter. But so I heard you, and I heard Mike Brewer. So yeah, it's absolutely important. I don't want teachers getting beat up in the classrooms, kicked, punched, things thrown out. And I wasn't really aware that it's happening way more than the community knows. So you have an advocate out there, me, at least one of them, behind the scenes, learning to understand. There's a few other things. I got time. Hold on. You know what? It's late. That's it for now. Thank you.
Did anyone want to go next?
Just real quick, Thanksgiving next week, I want to thank all our staff cabinet for all the work they do. I know those test scores didn't go up just because they went up. And also the parents who work with their kids at home and do extra stuff with them. And I want to wish everyone a great vacation, a happy Thanksgiving, healthy Thanksgiving, and see you all in December.
Yeah, thank you.
Just want to say God bless all the veterans out there. I'm a veteran. I know Dr. Velez's husband's a veteran. I know there's more veterans out there probably in the audience, and I know that that holiday has already passed. But huge shout out to all the veterans in the community of Temecula. They need more resources, not less. And shout out to the city hall for giving the veterans breakfast last week that I got to attend with a bunch of veterans. It was awesome. Huh? That's how we say it. I'm not making fun of the Marines, but I don't say the other way. That's all I'm saying. Anyways, love all the veterans out there, including Coast Guard and Space Force and all that, National Guard. Just shout out to everybody, Army, Navy, Air Force. It's a huge deal. If you see a veteran, thank them.
It's hard to know where to start tonight, but I want to thank all of you for being here. I'm disturbed with what I'm hearing with safety issues going on in the classroom. So we feel you. We hear you. Thank you for all the work that you do. We really appreciate it. But we need to do more than appreciate you and look for some solutions. In terms of drug treatment programs, done a lot of research and study. I do understand we want to support our students and our families. I think there could be other options. I have had questions in looking at this, and perhaps the next meeting will address it. Do we have malpractice insurance? Schools have sovereign immunity. What if something goes wrong within the process? These are real questions that need to be asked. It's not about us just turning down something because we want our kids to suffer or that we don't care about families. We do. But I think there can be some strong questions that need to be asked, that families need to be aware of. Students are most successful walking away from addiction when their parents are on board and when they're in the room and aware. And that's what we've always advocated for. So I know we'll continue with this discussion. November is a season to be thankful, and I am. I'm imperfect. I have learned so much in the last three years. I counted a great blessing to represent this community, and the words weigh heavily on me. I don't agree with what went down with releasing a coach. Just so you know, and we're not getting into personnel issues, I feel for the team at Chaparral. I'm with you. And I am praying that we're going to be able to move forward, whatever that looks like. I'm thankful to be a part of a district wide initiative to expand watchdogs, and I know I talk about it a lot. But when you're talking about safety and leadership and dads on campus, it means everything. I have been so blessed to meet some of these men who want to make the additional difference and be eyes and ears, and give kids high fives, and encourage them and the staff. It's beautiful. I was honored to attend the Temecula Valley Chapter Student of the Month program, where our own student board member was there. It was such, it was awesome. You go to these and you have your cup filled. They've celebrated for 30 years the achievements of our students, and they're there with their families and the principal and the administrators. And when there's so much angst with everything we're all trying to accomplish, it's so awesome to hear the encouragement. So there are so many good things happening in the district. I understand that. I'm also glad to be a part of a parent group looking at math. And this is a concern for us. Data from the 2025 fall cohort at UC San Diego showed one in eight incoming freshmen placed into math below a middle school level, a nearly 30 fold increase from five years prior. I don't know if I read that right. I'm spending a lot of time looking at that too, which is highly academic and important.
Dr. Woods, did you have superintendent comments? Oh, Emile, sorry. Did you have comments?
I want to spend some time outlining what I've accomplished this year as a board member, and I'm doing that because of my work being questioned on certain subcommittees and my time here spent as a district. Because our community deserves results, not promises. I have focused on academics, safety, transparency, and responsible fiscal leadership. Everything I have campaigned on, and the progress we've made together is real. I helped establish and spearheaded the Accountability and Goals Subcommittee, which has already contributed to higher math and ELA scores, achievement gaps closing across most subgroups, data driven planning that keeps Temecula competitive. Thank you, Dr. Woods, and strategic planning by our site admin, ensuring that the bar stays high. Strong academics protect both our kids' futures and our property values. I helped create the Grading Practices Subcommittee to ensure grading consistency across schools and in subject areas. A grade should reflect mastery, not inflation, not inconsistency. I supported and spearheaded reinstating the Constitution and civics test for eighth grade, which will take place, I am told, in the spring. I have helped to the greatest extent possible in strengthening our sped services, although we have a lot of work to do. We have greater collaboration between families in the district, and we have moved toward hiring more specialized personnel as a result of our special ed subcommittee. I have taken act, district action on campus safety, personally participated in multiple campus safety site visits with our Director of Safety, including major access and safety issues at Temecula Middle School. Thank you, Mrs. Lash Osborne and Brad for fixing the backstops this last couple of weeks because we've had safety issues with the ball going through the hole of the backstops and hitting the community members if they've watched Little League games. I've worked with the city for safer access routes, working with Councilman Schwenk to ensure students can enter campuses safely, including from bike paths. Safety is not a talking point. It is work, and I've been doing that work. I've advanced parental notification by developing these policies focused on transparency and non discrimination while avoiding costly lawsuits and draining taxpayer dollars. I've developed clear talking points for neutral classrooms. These talking points are being negotiated with Teachers Association and are designed to keep our classrooms focused on academics, not political, social, or ideological agendas. I've expanded student employment opportunities through Basis. I will continue advocating for a free drug and alcohol support program for families. Too many families in our community need access to prevention, intervention, and help, and they can't afford it. And there's more. Time's up.
Dr. Anderson, may I make my statement? Sorry, Dr. Woods. Okay, really quick, I'd like to share an overview of our first superintendent student council meeting of the year, which was held on October 29th. For those unfamiliar, the Superintendent Student Council is a group of about 30 middle and high school students from across the district who meet directly with district leadership to share authentic student perspectives. As a student board member, I help guide this council and ensure that our conversations are truly student led and centered around the real experiences of the students we represent. So we opened this meeting with a theme focused on happiness. This theme is grounded in research showing that students who feel happy at school are more productive, more engaged, and overall healthier. With that in mind, this meeting aimed to understand what actually contributes to student happiness and what changes students want to see on their campuses. I led the structure of our discussions by dividing students into four groups and guiding them through two collaborative brainstorming sessions. First, we asked, what makes you happy at school? Students consistently highlighted friends, supportive and engaging teachers, clubs, extracurriculars, spirit days, school events, hands on activities, CTE pathways, and lunch activities. In the second discussion, we asked, if you were the principal, what would you add or improve at your school? And students brought forward thoughtful and practical ideas, including better wifi, cleaner bathrooms, updated furniture, improved PE equipment, more electives, language options, expanded CTE access, more funding for clubs, more green spaces, and additional mental health supports and programs. I want to emphasize why I'm sharing this update today. As student board member, it is my responsibility to make sure that our community knows that we are actively listening to our students and that they are truly a part of the conversation. This meeting reaffirmed how much students care and how thoughtful their ideas are when given the space to speak. These suggestions and feedback will be taken into consideration at the district level, and I look forward to continuing the work of elevating student voice. And just a few other brief updates. On October 28th, I had the opportunity to be a guest speaker at Summit Academy, where I shared my civic engagement journey with their third grade students. Thank you to Ms. Hurley for the invitation and to the Summit Leadership Team for the warm welcome and the campus tour. On November 13th, I was honored to be recognized as Chaparral's November Student of the Month and attended a celebratory breakfast at Sizzler. Thank you to Mr. Leonardo for nominating me and to Ms. Sally Myers and the event sponsors for hosting. Congratulations to the other students who were recognized alongside me, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Melissa. And finally, for those of you that are here, thank you for being here. Gosh, it's almost 11 o'clock. It's amazing to see you in the audience. On behalf of our cabinet team, we wanted to wish all of you a meaningful Thanksgiving holiday season. It's time to take a rest, take stock of your family. We're fortunately in a thriving public school district in Temecula Valley Unified School District. I think the presentations today demonstrated that. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned at, oh, when's the next meeting? December 4? Okay. The next regular open session business meeting of the Governing Board of Education is scheduled for December 4th, 2025. This meeting is adjourned on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 at 10:41 PM.